Okay, we've had one more board member arrive, so we can begin the meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, and this is the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. Our first item, we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to welcome our student board reps to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to a Christian Republic, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we please have our roll call? This is Tagley Farah.
Ms. Arminio.
Here.
Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Bearman.
Ms. Bora.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Mrs. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky. Ms. Ratner.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Gerby.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum. Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted September 16th, 2022, at all schools, on the district website, monroe.k12 nj.us, published in the Home News Tribune, published in the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the Municipality.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to our approval of our minutes. We have our closed session minutes for August 17th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? Comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I oppose.
Okay, Ms. Arminio opposes.
I recuse.
And Mrs. Fabiano recuses.
I also recuse.
And Mrs. Ratner recuses. Okay, our next one is the public minutes for the meeting on August 17th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any recusals?
Recuse.
Okay, Mrs. Ratner recuses. Any abstentions? Okay. All right. Our next item is our student board members' report. I would like to welcome this evening our new junior board member, student board member, Hetvee Thacker. Welcome. And we also have our other board member returning, Siobhan Calatapoli. Thank you again for taking on this responsibility for the student body and being a representative and their voice here at our Board of Education meeting. So this evening, we encourage you to speak with us and give us your reports accordingly.
All right. So first off, for Barclay Brook. On Friday, September 9th, Barclay Brook held their first School Spirit Day, where students and staff were invited to wear red, white, and blue in recognition of Patriot Day on September 11th. The school day began with a moment of silence to remember and honor the sacrifices made by the men and women of our country, as well as those made by our veterans and military. Patriot Day allowed the school to be filled with patriotic school spirit. Another event is that during the past week, Barclay Brook students are learning what it means to be a great kid. In the school, using the acronym GREAT to represent the core values of growth, mindset, respect, empathy, acceptance, and trust. Students have been learning what it means to be great in all areas of school. Beginning in October, Barclay Brook will recognize and celebrate students who demonstrate great behavior. For Brookside, we're excited to report that Brookside has had a fantastic opening. The teachers did an excellent job setting up their classrooms for the first days of school, and the excitement that the students have for being back in school is very noticeable and seen in school each day. In the upcoming weeks, Brookside has many events planned. One event is Brookside's Back to School Night, scheduled for September 22nd. Another event is that 4th and 5th grade students will be partaking in Start Strong Testing on September 21st and September 22nd. Brookside School Week of Respect will be from October 3rd to October 7th, and the focus will be on promoting kindness and inclusivity and celebrating uniqueness and diversity. Brookside will be promoting the recognition of fire safety through a 3rd grade visit to the Fire Safety House and a Fire Safety Assembly for 4th and 5th grade students on October 13th. For Oaktree, on September 9th, Oaktree students recognized Patriot Day and wore red, white, and blue and had a moment of silence for 9/11. On September 16th, all classes attended a Behavior Expectations Assembly, in which students learned about expectations in different school settings, like the playground, cafeteria, hallway, and bus. It ended with classes competing against each other to answer "What Do You Do?" scenario questions. September 20th was Back to School Night for Oaktree, which proved to be an incredibly informational night. As for upcoming plans, Oaktree is scheduled to celebrate a Week of Respect, with theme days occurring each day from October 3rd to 7th. For the middle school, the middle school is happy to report that students are doing very well finding their classrooms and buses, as well enjoying lunch and recess with their new classmates. The first two weeks at the middle school have been very smooth, and a school-wide push has been enacted to ensure that all students have an ID card visible on them at all times. On September 12th, 13th, and 14th, Back to School Nights were held with each grade, and administration met with parents each night. School pictures at the middle school took place on September 16th and 19th. October will begin the middle school's after-school activities with the start of tag, MAC, and academic lab. Furthermore, clubs will begin in November.
Great, thank you very much. Siobhan?
At Woodland, oh, at Woodland, school opened on September 6th, 2022. In honor of Patriot Day, all students and staff wore red, white, and blue. WLML/PTO meeting was scheduled on September 12th, 2022. They had their Back to School Night on September 15th, 2022. The 4th grade band presentation was on September 16th, 2022, introducing the band program to the 4th graders and interested 5th graders coordinated by Ms. Tiana Zarelli and Mr. Yale Snyder. We had a virtual author's visit for a school that was coordinated by Ms. Tricia Rutherford. And the school will also start the NJ Start Strong Testing on September 20th, September 21st, and September 22nd. At Applegard, many of the classes did activities to commemorate 9/11, and they conducted a school-wide moment of silence. Their Back to School Night is going to be tomorrow, September 22nd, for both grades 4 and 5. Their first PTA general meeting will be held on September 29th at Oaktree Elementary School. The chorus and band program started zero-period practices on September 19th. Their Character Education Committee began to plan for the year, and multiple classes began the global read-aloud with the book Thursday. Mill Lake, over there at Mill Lake, on the first day of school, Mill Lake welcomed all 471 students, as well as their 100 staff members, with a colorful ribbon with individual names written on each one, and they were hung from all the trees surrounding Mill Lake School. Their PTO also adorned their front hallway with a beautiful balloon arch. They were very proud of their country yard, which was spruced up with new landscaping to complete their very warm welcome. And yesterday, September 20th, was Pirate Day for Mill Lake kindergarten students. And at Mill Lake, they were having their Week of Respect, they will have their Week of Respect during the week of October 3rd. And some of the events in this Week of Respect will include dressing your favorite jersey, wearing bright colors, and superhero day. In the Mill Lake School, Woodland PTO will also kick off their Readathon on October 10th, and it will run all the way for 18 days through October 28th. And over here at the high school, on September 15th, the high school hosted a Back to School Night, allowing for parents to learn more about their details, the upcoming plans over the course of their student's year. This week, starting from September 19th to September 23rd, the high school has been participating in a School Spirit Week in anticipation of the homecoming football game on Friday. And they're doing everywhere from Pajama Day to Purple and Gold Day, and students also have a variety of opportunities to showcase their school spirit with this Week of Course. And additionally, school pictures are occurring on the 21st and 22nd. And on September 29th, students will have the opportunity to participate in Club Rush, where they can attend a variety of virtual club meetings and further their extracurricular involvement.
Great, thank you very much. And I just want to encourage you both, as you hear things around our high school and you're their voice here, our students' voice here, always feel free to bring anything to our monthly board meetings and bring up for discussion here. Welcome to our board again, and we look forward to a great year with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next item is our committee reports. Do we have any committees wishing to give a report? Mrs. Belko.
I have two committee reports this month. I have the Curriculum Committee, which was another spirited, lively committee. We had an 8th grade mathematics presentation by Mrs. Gasko, and also the Accelerated Math Program for Grade 6. Discussion ensued about what these programs entail and the different perspectives that they can, that the teachers can use, different topics that are there. The Accelerated Mathematics Program is a feeder program into the honors programs and the higher learning level algebra classes that are given in the middle schools, as well as getting into the high schools. They are aligned, again, with the New Jersey State Learning Standards, and they meet the skills and the documentations for career readiness, life literacy, key skills, computer science, and design thinking. Ms. Gasko gives a very much better demonstration and talk about this on the video, so please avail yourself of her presentation on the video for math. The next thing that we had up on our agenda was from Ms. Danielle Druss, the U.S. History I and Honors U.S. History I, very interesting studies that are doing, again, aligning with the New Jersey State Learning Standards for Social Studies, Career, College, and Civic Life, and they do a lot of social study practices, they'll be promoting thinking beyond the classroom, they'll do some understanding of how the events of today were shaped by the events of the past, and that is both in U.S. History I. And then the honors history is, honors history U.S. One goes into more depth. The students are expected to provide more information and do more research and provide first, oh, I forget the term, but Ms. Druss will be able to share it with you. It's the, they provide different writing tasks and have a higher level of expectation. What I found very interesting about this was the fact that we are connecting to events today and that the students can do things like political cartoons, create an Instagram account of Uncle Sam, and do primary source documentation, I knew I'd find it here, primary source documentation for their papers. And they also can create visual, virtual museum exhibits and different things they have. The thing that struck me, and I'll just make this as a statement, is one of the examples that Ms. Druss gave was how comparison of women's rights back in the early U.S. history and women's rights today. And I'll just leave that at that. The next thing on the agenda, we talked a little bit about the cricket team club, and there's a lot of student interest for this, and it was student-driven that was brought to the athletics director, and we did ask for some additional information to come back to the committee, so we'll have more information about that. And they did have a presentation that they gave us, which was very interesting. We also had a very spirited conversation about Turn It In, and Dr. Higgins did an excellent presentation. We, as the financial committee and the curriculum committee, asked for a joint investigation about Turn It In and its usage, and some data information about Turn It In, because we wanted to make sure that we, as a board, knew what we were spending our money on and where we were going. And we are very thankful, and I know I saw Dr. Higgins earlier, but I do want to give him another shout-out, because he himself, from the research that we had asked for, had learned a lot about what was involved with Turn It In, and Turn It In has changed a lot over the years. They've added a lot of grammar and writing skill reviews. And what was discovered was is that the district and the high school teachers were not using it to its full potential, which was, I think, was a really great find for the board and for the administration, and they are working diligently this year to do some more professional development, increase the student use of it, because there wasn't a lot of student use of it, and also to increase and dispel the culture that this is just to catch people cheating, because it's not. It's not about that, and that's not what anyone's concerns were when we did bring this up to anybody there. So this is an excellent program. We felt that since the, and having conversations with Dr. Lehman in between meetings, which is my duty as the Chair of the Curriculum Committee, we discussed that right now, the middle school will be taken off the table until we can get some data and some information. The principal has assured me that he will be giving additional information as the year goes on, just to see where we're at, so that we can see what the teachers are doing. I am one for, excited for this, and the Curriculum Committee has, you know, brought this forward for approval for tonight. Once we received the information that we did, we have some very, very interesting PowerPoint from Dr. Higgins. So again, I want to thank him and his staff for the due diligence that they did to give us the information that we needed to make the responsibility and the decision that we need to make tonight. So that was all we had time for at the Curriculum Committee, because we did go over 10 minutes into the Finance Committee, so we will discuss some of those other items next month. And I know there's been some concern about there being, the length of the Curriculum Committee maybe being extended. We'll do some talk about that, and we'll figure that out, so that we have ample time to discuss all these things in curriculum like we want to.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Ms. Bora.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerby. Mrs. Belko, you just gave me the segue to the comment that I wanted to make. So this, nine months being on this committee, we've always had a full agenda, and we've, there have been moments when some of the administrators have had just four minutes to put the agenda across and get, you know, get approval. So I would like to make a case for the Curriculum Committee meeting time to be extended, if possible. One of the items on the agenda in this meeting that we could not get to, even though we, you know, we were trying really hard to rush through it, was the board goals discussion for the curriculum meeting. And the board has, throughout all other committees and through Mrs. Gerby's work, put up a board goal presentation for discussion today, and it's pretty extensive, but I did want to bring this up, that one of the challenges that our district has faced, which would be a discussion for the Curriculum Committee, and for people who are not aware, Curriculum Committee does not focus on academic, but it focuses on co-curricular, sports, everything. So there's a lot on this committee's plate, and one of the responsibilities of the board, one of the major responsibilities is student success. Everything is geared towards student success, and that's our North Star. And I feel like as the district has exploded in terms of our strength, and our administration has been playing, you know, to the best of their ability to manage the increasing student body and address every student's success, there do seem to be some gaps, which might need some review or audit. And I don't think that we've been able to get to those in the nine months that I've been on the committee, because there's just always agendas so full. We've differently able students across the town, and the ratio of counselors to students to teachers is not always at the same level everywhere. I'm sorry I'm running on, but my point tonight is that if we could find the, not as a board goal, but generally as a goal for this committee, to analyze the processes that our teachers, our counselors, and our administrators are following to advocate for every individual student's success, even though we are a big school district, but we have the ability, we have excellent administrators, we have, you know, excellent staff members. It's just that with time and with the nature of growth of students, some of these processes took a backseat, but if we just put through the job of the board, focus back into those things, parent advocacy is needed, but before parent advocacy, there should be teacher advocacy, counselor advocacy, administrator advocacy, and then the parent should be stepping in, that everybody did the best they could, but yet my child is not getting what they're getting. So there have been some, you know, issues that have been brought to us in the past few months, and that's the reason I brought this up, that if we could extend the time of this committee, there are several issues that could get addressed and not in a rushed manner. So that was my comment. Thank you for hearing me.
Mrs. Ratner?
Yeah, you know, I obviously agree with Ms. Bora. You know, I think every committee is obviously important, or we wouldn't have it. I do feel that the Curriculum Committee is one of the ones that directly impacts our students, very much so because of the discussions that are held. I know that the BG&amp;T Committee is the other one that tends to run a little bit long, but it's at the end of the night, so it's not as much of an issue, and it doesn't take away time from the other committees. So I don't know if it's a revision to the schedule, that's something we can look at or starting earlier. I know people have work also, so obviously something we can discuss. You know, you also had brought up about, you know, counselor advocacy, and I just want to say that our district has done a great job in increasing the number of counselors. However, we are still compared to many other districts at a much higher counselor-to-student ratio of the ones that I've been made aware of, just through my own studies. And so, you know, it can be really hard sometimes for counselors to reach out to every student, you know, especially, let's say, in the elementary school when they're the only counselor, or, you know, even honestly, all the schools, because our numbers are just continuing to increase. And, you know, I know from the counselors that I've dealt with, they're fantastic, but they have to be given the time to work with each of the kids. And then the other question I just had regarding Turn It In was, I know that we're putting it on the table for the middle school. Is there, just so parents are aware, is there a program similar that middle school teachers use that assists students with their writing if they're at home? Like, I know I use Grammarly for my own personal benefit, obviously, or they can use their own things, but I wasn't sure if, as a district, we have something that they can utilize.
Dr. Lehman, please.
So the purpose of Turn It In for the middle school was specific to working and managing our benchmarking process. It had nothing to do with the similarity report, or even the daily turning in and passing of assignments. It was really a, when you do a writing piece and a student types it in Google, or they handwrite it, logging, tracking, sorting, filtering data based on strengths of that writing is extremely labor-intensive. So, you know, you have 150, 400 in a grade level writing pieces. If you want to see where our strengths and weaknesses are in certain elements of writing, that's a manual process, going into each document, looking at Rubrik scores and things like that. Turn It In, one of the features of Turn It In is through the digital handling of that and the scoring digitally of it, the teacher goes in and makes comments and things, it then has the ability to pull that data, and then we can sort and filter. So that was really the primary focus. They were not going to use it for anything else. It was specific, like, they're all answering the same prompts, so there would be similarities between everybody's writing, so it wouldn't even serve a similarity report kind of piece to it. So that was really the purpose, but stepping it back, cleaning it up at the high school, making sure it's implemented in fidelity at the high school, then we can kind of step it back and kind of consider pushing it into the middle school. That's really kind of the purpose of Turn It In. In terms of like digitally submitting something to like a Grammarly-style program, you know, it's the traditional what's in Google that would, you know, those are the kind of things that would be picked up. Again, the teachers are interacting with the students and providing feedback and things, and that's still happening, but the role at the middle school for Turn It In specifically was managing the writing prompts and benchmarks and things along the way.
Okay, yeah, that's great to know. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else? And I just want to reiterate what Katie had said. Our committees, our committee meetings are our working meetings of the board, and our Curriculum Committee meeting this month is an example of how positive change can come from working together collaboratively with the board and the administration. So I think we had great conversations, we asked great questions, we brought our concerns back to the administration. I want to reiterate what Katie said, thanking Dr. Higgins for coming and providing all the information he did, and that is what the Board of Education is supposed to be doing. We are supposed to be here to ask questions on behalf of our students and our parents and our community to make the best possible decision when we're taking a vote. And I believe that working collaboratively together on this, we made a very positive change for our high school. So thank you, Mrs. Belko, for all of your work, and the committee for all of their work as well on that committee. And do you want to do your second report?
Yes, I was blessed with giving the report for the Personnel Committee. So I have the leaves and the transfer reports, and it looks like we have just about every position that has a leave or transfer filled. I did not count all the numbers, and I apologize for that. I'm more than happy to pass it around. We had a resignation in the exit information report, so we had five certificated folks leave the district. Three of those positions went to another district. One of those positions was a career change, and one was for personal reasons. We had five other resignations, three of them were paras, and two of them were custodians. So that's the report I have on that. I don't have exit information on that. We did talk about two job descriptions. The security guard basically changing school security officer instead of security guard. So school security officer is replacing the term security guard in that. And then we had the secretarial job description, and that one somehow didn't come off my printer, so I don't have it in front of me. Can you talk about it, please? I'm sorry.
No problem. So we had a para, a clerical para that was located in the People Personnel area, working with Ms. Ruela, and she had reached out, and regarding her needs, we were able to actually save some money in the district, so it was not an additional cost, and change that clerical para position to a position that would then be a part-time secretary without benefits. So it is a savings for the district, and it also will help Ms. Ruela be able to work at a higher level with her needs and her particular office. So that's all it was.
That's all I have to report about the Personnel Committee.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Any other committee chairs wishing to give a report? Yes, Mrs. Fabiano?
I also have two reports. The first one is the Community Engagement Committee met on the 13th. We discussed the chain of command and how it was uploaded to the website. We also talked about how we are now going to be using Sprout Social to manage all of our social media accounts, to link them all together. The district app is no longer going to be utilized. We also began discussing communication ideas for the referendum, and we'll continue at our next meeting to discuss more ideas. Was also mentioned about the bus transportation tracking app, and that it would be brought up with Ms. McDonald for next year. And we lastly discussed our board goals, which will be presented tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Fabiano? Okay, I'll do your next report.
And then the other report is for policy. So the policy, we had one policy and one regulation, which was policy number 2425. Same for the regulation. The emergency virtual or remote instruction program. We mentioned that this was completely independent of the road code board document, and they are not related in any form. This policy and regulation is with regards to any event that would close the district for three or more days, and is a plan for us to be able to pivot to virtual or remote instruction in case that happens. So that was the end of the Policy Committee.
Okay. Ms. Arminio?
First of all, thank you, Ms. Fabiano, for taking over that on short notice while I was away. So thank you very much. I'm sure you presided over it. Was there a plan presented? Yes. At that meeting?
The point of the regulation and policy is that you must have a plan.
Right.
And we had one last year as well. So basically, we met together, and we worked on the plan, and what we did was, we made sure to see what was current, what was applicable, and anything that was no longer current or applicable was removed.
And I wasn't able to look at, so...
That was uploaded as well.
It's updated. Okay. No, no, that's fine. And we're going to approve, it's on for approval tonight?
As a press read.
The policy and regulation.
Okay, but what about the plan? Doesn't the plan have to be submitted to the state by September 30th?
Yes.
But I think it has to be approved by the board.
We were given the deadline four days before the meeting from the state, that it was required, so we just moved forward with it. So we'll have to submit it. I guess the attorney could speak on how it works. So because it's in a first read, it still has to be submitted, but there is one that exists from last year. So what happens is similar to a contract, I would assume that it would roll over, that would be my understanding?
So the plan can be submitted, the policy itself will go through the two reads.
Yeah, that's the problem, but does the plan have to be approved by the board?
No.
Before September 30th?
No.
I thought, based on the policy, it said that the administration...
It had to be submitted.
It had to be submitted, but it doesn't have to be approved by the board?
So the plan is attached to the board agenda, and it's on there for approval.
No, I know, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Bora?
So I had a question about a policy that's in the agenda for a second read today. Can I ask that now, or do I have to wait for the agenda question to come up? It's up for a second read vote today, so I did need some clarification on that.
Yeah, it was discussed at the meeting, so...
Can I, it's facilities, it's the use of school facilities, so it was discussed at the meeting before that. So, and Mrs. Arminio, you were away last week, and that's when we had the discussion on email, so I figured I'll just ask this question today before we voted. After the policy change, there have been a few organizations that have been affected by it, and one of the concerns was brought up to a few members of the board. And so I went and read the policy again, and there is a couple things that I just want to read out really quick. So organizations are classified as 1, 2, and 3. There is a point on the Class 1 users that they could be immune... There is a point on the class of, class one users that they could be municipal recreation and/or other groups defined by the superintendent. That is class one. Um, and any nonprofit group that is not included in class one then becomes a class two. And there's another point in this policy that says that the director of facilities in conjunction with the business administrator will determine the classification, one, two, or three of the applicant and the fees and cost, if any, to be charged for the use of the facility will then be decided. So, we had an issue where an organization has been using it for some time. It's for educational purposes. Um, my question before we voted on this was that, the parts that I read where the superintendent seems to have some sort of discretion on classification, um, does that allow the superintendent to evaluate what that organization is, nonprofit, being used for education? I can classify that as one or two. What, is that what this language means in the policy?
Well, I, I believe that would be up to the full board's discretion and to give the authority to the superintendent. So, that's what's in the language of the policy. So, I would imagine that interpretation would be that the superintendent has that discretion. Now, is it open discretion on every one? I mean, the, the board has to be cognizant of that.
Right, right. So, if I may, so there was two specific organizations that reached out. But in the past, there were other, I was not the superintendent, but I was, I was a principal in the crowd. And other people have come forward, other organizations have come forward. And under the fact that they are non-profit and they are a form of education, they feel that they wanted to have no fee at the time for a few or the fee adjusted. I do think it's a topic of conversation. I'm very comfortable making a decision if that's the decision I need to make. But I definitely think that we have to be cognizant and very open-minded that who, how do we define the concept of education? If the education, because many, many things are even from a social or emotional, really fit the, really fit the definition of education. So, I'm comfortable with having that conversation. I think it would be a very appropriate conversation for facilities. You know, and we could do it under policy. Because I want to just make sure that I'm not splitting hairs with what I would deem. Because I, I do recall an individual coming to the podium and asking and they were denied. I do recall this. I was not the superintendent or the acting. And they were denied. And then a few groups, it was, I think, two different groups that reached out to me within the last few weeks also. So, I just want to make sure that we're fair and equal across the board and, and we, we just have parity for whatever we decide.
And my purpose of asking this question was only to understand the leeway we had in having a discussion and that's all I need. I'm not asking for one way or the other decision. I just wanted to know.
First of all, it wouldn't be my decision. I don't make unilateral decisions. I'm just the chair of the committee. But, um, I, I think that we have to be very careful of broad interpretations of things because what will happen is it will just delude the whole purpose of the three, uh, types of classes. And, um, as, as the superintendent said, we, we can, we can just call about, just about anything educational. So, um, I think we have to be very careful. Uh, the purpose of this is really to, um, not necessarily bring funds into the community, uh, into the district, but to make sure that we are just not using all our funds for a broad range of things that we would, that would, that would just continue to be expanded. Because again, you don't want to insult one group or another. That is not the purpose. But to answer your question in terms of this policy as a second read, if we, we can change the language tonight, if, if members of the board choose to, then we would have to reestablish a first read. However, we can pass it tonight as an approval and then go back to having specific discussions about it again. Again, in conjunction perhaps with facilities. I'm not sure that the facilities is, is the real issue or the, having the facilities available is the issue. I think the issue is more subjective about what class each group falls into. And that's where I think our responsibility lies to the intent of the policy.
And if I may, I think the verbiage of the policy seems to be very, um, it, it's, it seems to support the, the issue that I had. So, it, I don't think a change in verbiage is needed. I was just confirming that what I understood it to interpret, it does. That the superintendent does have, um, some sort of decision-making ability in deciding, uh, besides the municipal recreation, which other groups can be defined as.
Can I offer an example? I think that would be very helpful. So, I, I would, I would agree. So, I think by allowing the superintendent to have that authority, just thinking out of the box, perhaps it would be a local school, maybe a private school, that for whatever reason had a major catastrophe or had something positive and, and was able to, you know, their roof was being redone and they had to relocate. So, when you think of that, perhaps, I'm just thinking out of the box, maybe that would give the ability for that particular one not to pay the same high level of fee. They are an educational institution. It is a temporary situation. When you look at the other tiers, once we start saying educational, non-profit, I would say that almost all of them in that are non-profit. So, I don't know how we'd be able to delineate. So, I was just thinking out of the box that perhaps that would, that would make sense. Like even, maybe a childcare, maybe a preschool, all of a sudden had a flood and they needed to relocate. And instead of paying at a high rate, and I could be wrong, but this is how I'm thinking, you know, the spirit maybe of, and it's there way before me. So, maybe the spirit of having that in there allowed the superintendent to be able to say, oh, wait a minute. This educational organization doesn't have a home for their children for the next three months. They're going to be meeting when we leave. So, that was just maybe my thought. Maybe that's why that's in there.
Again, I, I don't know that it should be like subjective and arbitrary because, and I think it puts a lot of the burden on the superintendent. And then you may, or, or any superintendent may be stuck with, well, if then, how ma, how about me? And again, that's not the intent of the policy. So, if we do it judiciously, I certainly agree that for the most part, the superintendent has the authority to make these kinds of decisions. But, but also the board is setting this policy for a reason. We found that we were falling short. Um, you know, and our responsibility to our own district is to, um, you know, make this policy clear enough that, that we protect our district.
And if I, if I may, I, I think the, the questions that have come before the board and, and the district office hasn't been, we did not change the class of any of the users. That has remained intact. The issue was the increase in, in cost. So, it's not a group saying, I think I should be a different class. It's saying, I paid a much lower fee and now you're increasing the fee. So, it wasn't a, it wasn't a distinction of which class they were in. Um, it was more of, can we go back to paying the, the original price that we paid? Because it would be detrimental to our program if we had to incur this larger fee.
Well, that would, that would still be my argu, my argument would be you can't, you can't adjust that for one party.
And, and the request was denied by, by the business office.
And it's unfortunate, and, uh, we have to ask our, you know, forgiveness of, of the public. But clearly, we were, what, we were very behind the calculus for the, the cost of our, our facility. So, we have a responsibility, as Mr. Gagliardi often tells us, that, uh, we have, we cannot spend public funds recklessly. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the discussion.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Ms. Ratner?
Uh, yeah, so I actually had a question regarding this policy too, I guess, since we're bringing it up now. Um, I just wanted to clarify because, um, I know it mentions that scouting groups, um, would be receiving, um, the usage without any payment of custodial, security, service fees, all of that. Um, I guess the district would be covering. Is that regardless of what area of a building is utilized? Um, just from personal experience, I know that back when there was a World Thinking Day program for the Girl Scouts, they used the high school auditorium. It was a major event. Obviously, there was a lot required. But there had been charges accrued. Um, the service unit manager had actually came to speak about that. So, I just wanted to clarify if a scouting group or any of those groups that's in, um, class one is utilizing any part of our buildings, that there's no charge at all to that organization? If that's what it states?
That, that is the policy. I don't know what happened in the past.
Okay.
That would be, as the applications come in through the business office, they would be appropriately told what the fees were. And class one does not have fees with it, so.
Okay. That's good to know. I will, I will certainly let them know because that was an issue that had been brought up in the past. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, uh, Mr. Chiarella unfortunately is not here right now. Um, he was, I thought he was on his way. Um, but he has the BGNT committee report, um, as well as the finance report. So, I will do my best to, um, remember what we had discussed and, um, let you know. I know BGNT, we discussed, uh, referendum process, progress, I should say. And Mr. Tagg let us know that, um, the information is all been given to the estimator. Um, so we are waiting for that to come back to get the final cost, the plans. They submitted all of the plans to the estimator and we are waiting for that to come back. Um, and then that will be presented to the board, um, the entire package of the cost of the referendum. Um, we also discussed the turf and, um, track that is complete now. Um, very excited. We have our advertisements I passed before. They are up there. I think we have five or six up there right now currently?
Yes, um, I can confirm four.
Okay.
And if there are a couple of, as I came in today.
I counted as I was driving by.
So, there's four signs and we have advertised with a sign. So, that would be a fifth. If there are other ones, maybe they came in today and were just hung recently.
Great. So, that was one of the initiatives that came out of the CE in, CE Committee last year, brought through buildings and grounds, um, and very excited because that was a revenue initiative that has now come to fruition. And hopefully, we will have more, um, businesses and business partners that come forth and advertise on our stadiums. Um, this weekend or this Friday, we have our homecoming dance and it's going to be our official ribbon cutting, um, of the new turf field and track. Um, so everybody is invited, the entire community, to come out and see that. Yes, Ms. Bora?
Plans were shared for the new bleachers.
Oh, yes, we had a discussion about, um, relooking at the bleacher project. We talked about, um, the proposal last year when we were going for the turf and track field. Um, the bleacher project we had put on hold because, um, I guess, A was, one, one thing was the price and, and the second was that they still, the current bleachers had seven-year life, um, left on them. Um, we talked about, um, the new, if we were going to look back at this, the bleachers, the home bleachers would be on the other side where they are now. So, right now, the home bleachers are further away from the high school. They would be closer to the high school. There would be storage underneath. There would be some type of tunnel that the athletes would go through. Um, so we, we had discussed that and I had mentioned that in, um, discussions with, uh, Mayor Delina and thanking him for the shared services agreement, um, and how the board was very fiscally responsible in that project. And we went with the lower cost, um, for the track and the field. Um, as well as, um, part of the conversation was to let him know when we redid the policy that we were keeping the, um, community groups still as a tier one and they were not going to be changed tiers and we were not going to be, um, they would not be incurring the cost to use our facilities. Um, which he was very thankful for the board for doing that. Um, but I also did mention that that is at a cost to the board because it's, it's not bringing in the revenue that it could. Um, so, I mentioned, I discussed with him again to bring back up the bleachers. And he said if we got him a proposal, he would be willing to bring it back to the council and talk to them again about maybe another shared services agreement. Um, yes, Ms. Arminio?
Um, there, there was a proposal written up last year, the year before. So, that, there is documentation for that and the, uh.
Yeah, Mr. Tagg was going to go back and, yeah, he was going to go and just ask them, um, to relook at the quote and just adjust it at no cost. It was going to be no cost to reach back out to the vendor and just have them update the numbers.
But that document is available?
Yes, we have it. Yeah, that was discussed.
That was the document we saw in the meeting. He shared the exact same document.
Yes. And then we discussed about, um, our facility needs. Um, we talked about, let me remember this. The middle school has the chillers, the need for the chillers. And the two air handlers. And we discussed about taking, because we don't have the money in our, um, general budget to cover those costs, um, as we're going out for the referendum and seeing as we are making updates and upgrades and renovations, as well as the addition to Applegarth, I made, the committee made the suggestion that maybe we should put that into the referendum as well as an addition and a renovation to the middle school. Um, Mr. Tagg was very happy to hear that, that we would go that route. And I believe we are, we are able to fund, is it the chiller? The air conditioner? There was something we were able to.
The conversation was because there's such a demand-supply challenge. There's a forty-four to fifty-six week time gap between when we order and we get it. So, Mr. Tagg's recommendation was that we put it in the budget for next year.
Right.
And through the contract with Omni, I think, we would be able to start the process right now so that we have it in time when we have the money.
Right. Yes, so the funds are committed now. Does anybody have any questions on that? Yes?
I wanted to, um, first of all, um, say that I agree. That's a great idea. Um, because it makes us, um, become more fiscally responsible to the community that we're not just, you know, looking at expansions, but also at really, I don't want to say, like, you said renovating, but like, you know, fixing the problems that are there as well. Um, I also just wanted to ask in regards to the referendum because I know this was a discussion that had come up. Um, and there was a discussion with, um, either Mayor Delina or the, um, business administrator at the township that there would be no future building that they could foresee. Um, however, I know that there was concern in the community because with the master plan, there's a fair amount of potential homes mentioned there. I was trying to do some research as to whether or not those are only active adult communities or if it encompasses, uh, children as well. It looks like it's a mixture of both. Um, I don't know if either Ms. Arminio or Ms. Kirby, if you know whether or not the master plan is for five years or ten years. But looking at that, without obviously having exact numbers, I'm wondering how we, I guess, utilize that information when planning for the future. Because obviously, the last thing we'd ever want to do is work hard to get this referendum passed and then in five years have to look at something again because of the fact that these were being built and it was in the master plan, but we were not able to use that information at the time, if that makes sense.
Well, and that, that is the conundrum that many Board of Educations face is that when you're going out for a referendum and expansion of your facilities, you can only plan out five years. Um, so, the demographers report was looking at the numbers in, for the next five years. Um, I know at that point, they did say they had provided us with what permits were pulled at the time, um, what had not come through yet. I mean, maybe that's something that we can look into, uh, Mrs. Chandler or Dr. Lehman. Um, has that changed? Have any of those permits, um, been pulled now? And has anything come before the planning board? And, um, we could certainly take a look at that. But the demographers report that we did, we're, we're bound to, we can't go out for ten years. We, we have to, that, that is the state law. We can only go out for five years.
Okay, like just, and I'm obviously not going to read the entire master plan. I'd be here all night. But I, I tried to at least find what I could in it. And it does say, aside from currently approved and pending projects, there's limited room. But as of the writing of this plan, which is now, there is a projected, um, maximum of two thousand four hundred and forty additional housing units that could be added through greenfield development. So, again, we don't know if that's in the next five years for sure, but the master plan wasn't here when we received the demographers report. So, I just think it's important for us to do our due diligence and find out whether or not this information is something that we should be considering when looking at our numbers.
Well, yeah, and I, I don't think it's, you know, it's a, it's a reworking of the master plan. It's not a brand-new master plan. So, there was, there was development in the old master plan as well. Um, but again, our numbers, our demographer sat down with the township and went through everything. Uh, Ms. Arminio, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I did. Um, as a matter of fact, next, and I was, uh, a little bit disappointed that more, um, uh, community members did not come to the planning board when they presented the master plan. Uh, I, myself and a couple of other people were there and we spoke to that. However, based on some of our concerns, uh, next Thursday, on the twenty-ninth, um, and I believe it's going, and I'm not sure if it's going to be in the library or in the municipal building, they are going to talk about water, our water allocation, because let's face it, all the build-out is going to affect our potable water. And secondly, um, they never addressed the affordable housing, which could be as high as six thousand units. Because we owe one thousand one hundred and thirty-three units of affordable housing, but that's only one in five. Because they can, they can have four units to everyone, affordable housing. So, do the math. Um, but that will be presented next week, the twenty-ninth. I believe it's at six-thirty. And forgive me, I'm not sure if it's in municipal building. But that is going to significantly impact, and that two thousand is something entirely different, greenfields, than the affordable housing. And they've always, as, as much as I appreciate Mr. Delina, but prior to him, they've always kept the affordable housing numbers very, very close. they've always kept the affordable housing numbers very, very close to the vest because they are so enormous and they are gonna impact our schools.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on that? Okay, and then the finance report. If you saw me looking at my phone earlier, that's what I was trying to pull up, just so... Oh, I can, if I can read it off that, yeah, it's better than the phone, absolutely. Okay, so this is from the finance committee. The committee was provided the July 2022 attorney invoices for review totaling of $15,511. Oprah portion was $2,013. Isaacs versus Monroe Township Board of Education defense was an initial additional $6,181. Dependency on legal services for Oprah request processing is lessening as the onboarding of our part-time Oprah secretary progresses. Review of the bill, uh-oh, what did I do? Sorry. Whoops. Clicked the wrong button. Forgive me. Sorry, forgive me. I clicked the wrong button. Is this it? Yes. Okay. The committee was provided and reviewed the bill list from August 16, 2022 to September 22, 2022. Checks processed for this period were $6,833,566. The finance chair requested backup on random selection of items for oversight and best practice and discovered no issues. Inquiries were made concerning JamF software for $49,230. Mr. Feldman provided explanation on that contract covers a cloud server that allows for management of the district iPads. Status of the 2122 audit. Ms. Allen updated the committee on the status of the 2122 audit. All is tracking timely for the calendar milestones as we continue with the same firm, but a new audit team. Falcon Care ECE financial statements as of 6:3022. ECE reports a profit of $49,074.14. Falcon Care reports a loss of $48,828.21. The 2223 budget anticipates $200,000 in returned earnings as a revenue source. Enrollment is up 38% from 2021 to 22. Ms. Corallo was also invited to the October Finance Committee meeting to follow up on her previous presentation of potential initiatives to help support continued recovery of these programs after the pandemic derailment so we can resecure higher numbers of revenue. No public school aid, Ms. Allen, or non-public school aid. Ms. Allen provided details concerning handling of non-public school aid with local childcare learning center. This is similar to last year where the district facilitates the aid coming in from the state to a non-public school and works with them on where to spend the funds accordingly. This is a task the district must perform but does not impact the district budget or aid. And just going on with that, the money that we get in, the non-public school applies for and it has to be sent to the actual school district where that non-public school resides. So the money that comes in is not our state aid. It has to be given to that non-public school. And any monies that they do not spend, the district is required by law to send that back to the state. Discussion of board goals. The committee discussed board goals. The focus should be on support to referendum passage and continuously highlighting district initiatives for revenue opportunity beyond the local taxes and state aid sources, advertising Falcon Care ECE, summer programs, facilities, use, et cetera. The community should be alert to the district's ongoing prioritization of cultivating additional revenue so the perception isn't that we are just relying on being able to pass a referendum or increase taxes to meet our needs. And that is the finance report. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Ms. Fabiano?
I just have a, sorry. You said there was a $48,000 loss for Falcon Care ECE. I was just curious if we knew that there was a breakdown between if there was more of a loss with Falcon Care versus ECE?
Yes, so Falcon Care had the loss.
Use the mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. So Falcon Care had a loss of, I think it was $49,000 and ECE had the profit of about the same amount. So it was a wash.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ratner?
Just in regards to Falcon Care, I know last year we had briefly discussed, I think Dr. Lehman, you had mentioned with Mrs. Corallo, the idea of combining like sort of an after-school club with the Falcon Care program. Is that something that's still in the works or are we tabling that to look towards next year for?
So that's something that she can discuss when she comes to the Finance Committee meeting next month. She's gonna be invited to talk about her vision for the program moving forward. And our enrollment is up 38% from last year. So the break-even point was last year's numbers. We're already looking better heading into this year.
Thank you very much.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Okay, does we have any other committee reports? I think that concludes our committee reports. Yes. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our board discussion on board and district goals. So like I had mentioned to all the committee chairs and the board members, New Jersey School Boards was not able to accommodate our meeting schedule to come. She, Mary Ann Friedman is taking our new rep around, meeting with a lot of the districts. So we're hoping that they will be able to come to the October meeting. But she did say that the board was welcome to discuss and deliberate and come up with their own board goals. She said the normal is between three and five goals. So I had asked all of the committee chairs to bring it up at their committees and have a discussion and try to come up with some ideas for goals. I took all those ideas back and I put it into a presentation form and we can have a discussion this evening on that. Our first board goal that I put together through our collaboration is the Board of Education is committed to addressing all facility needs of the district. The board will achieve this by continuing to focus on the April 2023 referendum plan to address the overcrowding needs of our facilities, addressing and planning for facility infrastructure projects and supporting stopgap projects that address facility needs. This was one that came out directly of BGNT with the recommendation for the addressing and planning facility infrastructure projects coming from Mr. Take. Does anybody, let's open up a discussion on, do we wanna talk about that board goal? Anybody have any questions, comments, additions? Ms. Ratner?
Just one thing. I agree very much with all the goals that are listed. I just want to, I don't know if we wanna add this or just think about it when we're doing it, when it states like supporting stopgap projects that address facility needs. I feel that we should make sure that those are being done without hurting our educational goals, which obviously is something that we know we would want to do. I just don't know if that's something we would want to add in there, in the wording.
Yeah, I think that would, those come, the projects come to us as recommendations from the superintendent and the administration. So I would hope that that is something that they would be looking at before they bring us a recommendation for that. I mean, we could maybe, you know, put something in there, but I wasn't sure. Sure, Ms. Chanley?
I mean, it could be in writing, but to be responsible, because our first priority, our only priority really are the children. Any and all stopgap projects that are come are really thoroughly vetted. So they are, they are in consultation with the building level administration. We bring in the supervisors, conversation about if we are taking something away to add something else, who, if anyone, are affected by what's removed. So I can't imagine moving forward with any stopgap for as long as I've been here unless it assisted children.
Okay, yes, and, you know, obviously that's whatever, you know, all of our hopes would be. I just, I know some of our projects recently, because of the numbers and because of mandatory things that we've needed, obviously, but has put some of our special classes on a cart, which affects all the students potentially in that school. And obviously, you know, art or music coming to the classroom on a cart doesn't give as beneficial an educational experience sometimes as if they were going to the classroom where there's a number of resources available and things like that. So, and of course, sometimes we need it and it has to go that way. And this, we're not the only district where that happens. But that's why I sort of thought of it when I was looking at the goals, just to make sure that that's something that we're also looking at. That's really all that came from.
Yeah, and I think the classes that go on a cart aren't necessarily, wouldn't be classified as a stopgap project.
Yeah, usually the stopgap projects usually might give... Just thinking back to most of the stopgaps. Most of the stopgaps usually enable the classes to come off the cart and wind up having an extra space that can be utilized intermittently with the other classes. So, and I'm, you know, I don't wanna be quoted and say all, but from memory, the few stopgap projects that I'm thinking of have given extra opportunities for additional classrooms for those that are on a cart, which is usually the elementary school.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, board goal two. This came out of the finance committee discussions. The Board of Education is committed to supporting financially fiscally responsible revenue-driven initiatives. The board will support and highlight district initiatives for revenue opportunities beyond the local taxes and state aid sources, advertising Falcon Care ECE, summer programs, facilities use, et cetera. This ongoing prioritization of cultivating additional revenue demonstrates the district's understanding of the importance on not simply relying on being able to pass a referendum and increase local taxes to meet needs. Does anybody have any comments on that one? Yes, Mrs. Belko?
I, for sake of visual, can we bullet point these down and then come up with what is our measurement going to be? Like, I'm just thinking like advertisement. We started last year with the advertisement, you know, initiative. And okay, so this year we've got four advertisements. So what do we have for, you know, and where do we see our growth in that area? Like, I'm a, I'm a big data person, right? So I like to know where do we see our growth in that area and what are we expecting? What is our goal? Is our goal to get to 10 advertisers by the end of the fall season? Or to have 15? Did we meet our goal for Falcon Care? What is our goal for how many students we want enrolled in Falcon Care or ECE? If we start this, you know, club program, which we did have present to us last year, what is going to be the goal for that? I think, you know, to have a broad goal like this is great, but when we're gonna talk about the specifics, I think we should have, you know, smart goals that give us what we're looking for. And just so that we can see, because how else do we know whether something's working or not, right? If we sit at four advertisements on the football field and we continue to put it out there, it's on our website, we all talk to whoever's, you know, whoever owns businesses, you know, here in the, in the local area, their kids come to our schools, and we're still not getting that advertising dollar, then we should rethink how we're going about that. What are we doing to, you know, do that? Same thing with Falcon Care. What are we not doing, you know, to attract the people to come to Falcon Care, which we want them to do? Falcon Care's a great program. I used it myself in the younger years. You know, well, my kids are no longer teenagers now, but... So I just would like to see us be a little more specific with, you know, we'd like to see a 10% increase from what we started at now. If we have four advertisements, we'd like to see a 10% increase by March. I'm, this is, we could leave that up to the math people, the business people to come up with those kinds of things, but I think we should be, for this particular goal, we should really hone it in and really say this is what we wanna do.
Yeah, I think, and, you know, maybe Ms. Arminio, you can help me with this a little bit or help us with this since you've been on the board the longest. Some of that sounds more like it's part of the district goal. Our, you know, the Board of Education is committed to supporting fiscally responsible revenue-driven initiatives. We list some of those. I think the measurement at the end of the year of how we've met our goal would be just what you said. How much did we increase? Our goal is to support the district initiative to bring in other revenue sources. We're not, the board isn't going out and saying, we're gonna sell 10% more ads. That's, that's the, the district would be doing that. It's, it's, there's a fine line between what a board goal is and what a district goal is. And I was very careful when I was writing this to make sure that I wasn't saying we were, the board, gonna do this because it would be, you don't wanna have a goal that would look as though you're micromanaging or running the school district.
Yeah, no, I get it. There is a fine line to that, but...
But I understand what you're saying and I think at the end of the, at the end of the year where we're supposed to, the board is supposed to go through a self-evaluation of the board, that's when we look at our goals and say, what have we accomplished? And, and look at that. And the goal, you know, for the district, I know we've brought it up through CE and C and Buildings and Grounds and Finance and all over, that we are looking to, we want the district to be looking for additional revenue opportunities for us. So that is something that we, the board, has been, has given to the district administration. But I can change this up and, you know, put different, you know, break it down into bullets of what we're looking at. Ms. Arminio?
Could we include in this some review as you did with Turn It In? We talked about reviews of clubs, reviewing, the board encourages review of our, you know...
Current programs.
Yeah. Say it through the mic, 'cause I didn't actually...
Review of our current programs for, you know, fiscal responsibility utilization to its fidelity, similar to what we did.
Yeah, so that would be, to Ms. Belko, like a bullet point. So if you can make that bullet point, I also think that that's easier to understand, easier to read.
Yep.
And that works for that. Yeah, I would encourage that. Because we have to be very careful of how, we're not, we can't go out and solicit business, if you will. That's not our, our purview, really. But we, but we can, we can be fiscally responsible with what we have and in review of that.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, I will add that and send that back out.
I had one quick question before.
Sure.
We were moving to goal three. So, understanding both sides. I also, just because I know the public has asked us before about acronyms. Ms. Belko, I can certainly understand your idea of smart goals with what that stands for. For those who may not know, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-based. So that's a way to judge whether or not the goals are met. At the same time, I certainly understand the difference and making sure we're not performing the one that we're not supposed to be doing as a board. I also know that this had been something that I believe the three of us as new board members, when we were doing our orientation, had brought up a possible revenue creation committee with members of the public. There are certain people in the public who may have expertise on ways to bring in revenue additionally. Again, I don't know if that's something that we can do as a board or if that's overstepping. And then when I was reviewing our agenda for tonight, I also had been on the NJSPA website and saw that there's actually grant support that's offered as part of our membership. And they actually have a grant search program on there. The link is upstream.grantsoffice.com. I briefly looked at it and you can literally just put in like energy efficiency and it comes up with, you know, hundreds of potential grants. I know we have a supervisor of grants. I don't know if she, I'm assuming she would not have access to the School Board Association website. I'm sure she has her own software that she utilizes in addition to Mr. Take and all of those who sort of look at grants. But as a board, again, without overstepping, because we never wanna do that, I'm wondering how, and maybe this is a question for our field rep, we can utilize this software to look for grants that will help us save money as a district without overstepping our responsibilities as a board?
Well, yeah, and I think that is a common theme, Ms. Ratner, with overstepping. We do have a supervisor of grants and I'm sure, I mean, we can have Mrs. Chanley confirm with that what she does have. I know that she actively searches tirelessly for every grant possible that we could get. I know that, like Ms. Borah, when she attended that seminar, she was very excited and said, wow, look, I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna tell them about this. And Mr. Take had already applied for it. So yes, bringing information to the district administration, to the superintendent, you hear something and you bring it, nine times out of 10, the district is probably already doing it. So I wouldn't wanna say that we are not actively looking for all the grants that we could possibly get. I do understand your point. I don't know if that was a member-only section of New Jersey School Boards or not.
You have to log in as a school board member in order to do that.
Because they do have a lot of information that you don't have to. And I would imagine maybe within the district, because we pay for that subscription, I would imagine that we would probably have people in the district that have membership access. Ms. Chanley, fair, is shaking her head, yes?
Yes, both the grant supervisor and Mr. Take.
Okay, so they have access to that grant search through School Board Association. Okay, that's, that was my primary question, just 'cause I know I had to log in as a school board member. And obviously, we want every possible opportunity to get, I don't wanna say free... And obviously, we want every possible opportunity to get, I don't want to say free, but money that, you know, is not already allocated to us to save our money if we can.
Yep, and that is a, definitely a, um, an initiative that we have always had, I think, in the district of looking for all the possible grants that we could possibly get. And we've done so many great things throughout the district at our schools with some of the grants that we have gotten. Okay, board goal number three. The board is committed to negotiate a new teacher contract with the MTEA and a new administrators' contract with the MTSA focused on the financial and educational goals of the district where student success is at the forefront. Um, I know the contracts are up, both of them, June 30th of 2023. So we had discussed as a board previously, uh, renegotiating, obviously renegotiating those, um, contracts. And I think that is a goal, and I would hope that we would be able to successfully negotiate a contract as a board with both of these unions and not have our teachers work without a contract for years like previously it happened. So I'm hopeful that we could, um, come to some sort of, um, contract negotiations and settlement by the end of June. I think that should be our goal as a board to get that done this year. Ms. Arminio?
I, I, I would object to this as a goal. I think it's a normal course of business. I think it's our responsibility to do this. So I'm not sure that we should take up a, a position of a goal for this. This is something I think that has to happen regardless of whether it's a goal or not. So I would object to this as, as a specific goal. I would hope that that would be the intention, and it seems to have been the intention of every board going, you know, in the past and hopefully going forward. So I, I think we'd be wasting an effort of, of calling this a goal. I think it's, it's a necessary and our responsibility as a board to do regardless of whether it's a goal or not. So I, I just don't think it's appropriate as a goal. Thank you.
You're welcome. I did take a look through School Board's website, I did look at other districts' goals. There was a few that are renegotiating teacher contracts, they put it on as a goal. That was one of the reasons that I did, I put that there. If we don't want to put that as a goal, I think that having it as a goal sends a positive message to both our administrator and teacher unions that we are committed to negotiating with them. I don't think it hurts to have that as a goal. I mean, I, I think that's one of our big goals as a board this year to ensure that we do get these contracts successfully negotiated, because it has, there have been times where the board did not settle the contract and it created a lot of angst in our, in our school district. So, I mean, that's just my feeling, I, you know, I'm open to everybody else. Ms. Bora?
Yeah, no, I want to understand, so this is done once in three years or once in two years? How often is this?
Three years.
So maybe that justifies making it, it a goal, because this year is, it needs to be done. But next year, this won't be a board goal, and the year after, it won't be a board goal.
Right.
Just to, and I, I kind of agree that it would just put that a big, put a big, a focus off the board on getting this done in a timely and efficient manner.
Ms. Ratner?
You know, and, and I was going to agree, being very careful because of the conflict of interest that I have, but just stating you had mentioned June 30th as being like the hopeful end date as the goal. So I know when we had discussed, you know, just before with the revenue, we didn't necessarily want to put numbers or dates in. But I agree, you know, if there are teachers working without contracts, you know, teachers will always do the best job they possibly can, but it can lead to them feeling, you know, dejected. So possibly putting it, um, before the, you know, expiration of the current contract creates it as a goal for us for this year and something to really focus on. So like, you know, again, I can see both sides of it, as, you know, usual. But I don't know if that's just something we'd want to add to make sure that that's where we show the purpose of it.
Anybody else? Ms. Belko?
Um, I could go either way. I mean, I think it, it's, you know, it's once every three years, we probably should have it, because it does show good faith and good faith effort that we're going to make forward. But I would like to ask, when we talk about acronyms, can we just put in that MTEA stands for Modern Township Education Association? And then MTSA stands for Modern Township Supervisors Association?
Supervisors and Administrators.
And Administrators, yeah. Oh, yes, you're right, association.
Yeah, just so that everyone understands what that is when they look at our board goals on the website.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Paviano, are you okay with keeping it, are we going to keep this a goal? Ms. Scott?
I'm okay with it. I do think it's part of your job as, as a board, so I am kind of in agreement with Michelle, but, uh, and I'm just curious as to what other goals we could, uh, come up with besides this one. I mean, again, like you said, it does show, um, optically, it looks good that that's, you know, one of our goals, that we want to make sure that we have a successful negotiation of the contracts. But again, it's, that's part of, that's one of our major jobs as a, as a board, is to do the negotiations. And then, just for curiosity, being that you have members that are part of the Education Association or at the NJAA, like you, you were saying, or you're conflicted?
My husband.
Or your husband?
In the district.
Does that, um, become a conflict of interest in a sense, being that it's a board goal?
Now, Mr. Gagliardi, if you want to give your legal advice.
You understand what I'm saying?
Oh, no, you're right.
If that's, if this is a goal and a member is in NJAA.
So I, I can address that, I'm, I'm sitting back there, so my head isn't between you and your goals. I don't want to get between the board and its goals. So the short answer to your question is no, and I'll explain to you how that conflict works. So if because of your own membership in the statewide affiliate of the, the New Jersey Education Association's, got local chapters, right, so if you're a teacher in another district and you're a member.
Right.
Or if you are married to a spouse who is covered by the collective bargaining, the, uh, current parameters set by the school ethics commissioner are as follows. You cannot participate in any way in the bargaining for that contract. So you can't be part of an executive session where strategy is discussed, you can't be on the negotiations committee, you can't be privy to any written communications. Once there is a memorandum of agreement, however, you are allowed to see it and you are allowed to participate in the debate and in the vote on the contract. So the conflict prevents you from being part of the negotiations, but not approving the agreement. And since that's the current state of the law, I do not think it creates any issues for the board if that were one of the board goals.
Okay.
If I may, since it's become a social media, a new social media with me. So my husband is a member of the MTEA and he is a, I'm very proud to say, a happy high school teacher. Could you also comment on what my role, if any, would be? That would be very appreciated.
Sure. So, not unusual for an administrator to be in this position, so there are also clear parameters from that. So under those circumstances, an administrator, and usually you're talking about a superintendent or a business administrator, those are typically the administrators who are involved in collective bargaining. They too, like a conflicted, uh, member of a teachers' association, could not be on the negotiations committee. Unlike a, a, a board member who had that type of conflict, given the nature of the superintendent's role and the business administrator's role, can we have a situation where there's more or less student contact time or in services? What are the financial implications of doing this or doing that? You need these people to be a competent negotiating committee. So they are permitted to serve as resources for the committee, that's how it's described in the cases. So if you wanted the superintendent to attend a session, she could. If you wanted to ask the superintendent about a question associated with a position you would or would not take, you can do that. She can't participate in the bargaining, but she can be aware of what's going on to the extent you need her to serve as a resource. Same would be true if the business administrator had a conflict. So that's their role. They won't be on the committee, but they are permitted to know what's going on and answer questions to the extent the committee needs them to function.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any other questions on this?
I will now remove my head, but I will be, just, just be on range if you need me.
Okay. Okay, board goal four. The board is committed to transparency and increasing communications with the community to ensure all stakeholders are informed and their concerns and ideas are acknowledged. The board will achieve this by utilizing the proper chain of command set forth by district administration, supporting the use of all social media outlets for communications. This is something that came out of the Community Engagement Communications Committee. Um, the committee works hard this year with the administration to come up with a, um, nice graphic, uh, chain of command that is up on our website for the community to see. So this is, this is the discussion that we had at CE and C, and this is the goal, if anybody would like to have a discussion on this. Yes, Ms. Ratner?
Just one quick thing, and obviously I was part of this discussion, but seeing it now, looking at the bullet points, we have the chain of commands on the website and we've already discussed utilizing Sprout. Thank you. Um, so I feel like, obviously, we want to utilize these resources, but in terms of a goal, we've put them in place. So I'm wondering if we want to look into further ways of increasing transparency and communications, if it's worth us continuing to keep them on there, because they're already put in place, if that makes sense?
Yeah, well, I think the, the board is committed to transparency and increasing communications by utilizing the proper chain of command. So again, we, we as a board, if we have people coming to us as a board, we should be utilizing the chain of command to better communicate with all stakeholders, parents, community members, the proper venue, the proper place, the proper person to go to for the information, rather than us trying to answer questions that we otherwise should not be involved in. And then again, supporting the use of all social media outlets for communication. We can rewrite it, but I know our, the goal was to increase communications. If, this isn't saying this is, this is our goal, to increase our communications. How we do that, that's what's formulated in our committees, that's what the district administration recommends to the board. Uh, we could reword it if anybody wants to take a crack at it. Ms. Bora?
No, actually, I think the way to look at it, the different perspective, is that we currently, in the work we've done in that committee, have set us, set ourselves up to accomplish this goal. So, uh, we've, we've now more clarity on the chain of command directly on the district website to, you know, to facilitate that involvement of all stakeholders. We are now still in the process of Sprout Social, we're not there yet.
Right.
So the vision that we had as a committee hasn't really been accomplished, still a goal. I think, I would say we will accomplish it when we start to have this every day or, you know, a, a consistent cadence of messaging coming from every school in the district on our district page. That's when I'll say we've accomplished our goal. So yes, we've set ourselves, but we're still on the path.
Just continue to improve it. And then the other thing, and Ms. Grabby, I don't know if you want to clarify this, um, just because I know that there have been members of the community who will email the entire board, and, you know, we just recently put the chain of command up there. But as individual board members, you know, we're not allowed, we're supposed to respond. I know they get upset, they're like, you know, all the board members are ignoring my concerns. I don't know if there's a disclaimer, if there's something that we can put, just so members of the public are aware that individual board members are not allowed to respond to the concerns. So like, we can certainly discuss them as a board to try and look into potential solutions, but we cannot respond to those community members.
Uh, yes, well, and that, there's a distinction, a couple of things there that you said, I agree with a couple that we have to be careful with. So if we get, if, if any board member gets an email from anybody, generally the, well, generally, it depends. If it's something that the board should not be answering, I will always send it over to the district administration and ask for them to handle that. There are times where I, as the president of the board, do answer, um, but not to say that I will find them a solution. It's more of saying, I, you know, thank you for emailing us. This is, and this is what I did with the recent one that just came to the full board. This is the chain of command. I understand, I, I understand what your concerns are, and here is the process to get your concerns heard through the district. Here's the chain of command. If you go through that entire thing and you don't find resolve, then you can come to the Board of Education. But any board member, and I know I've said this in the beginning of the year too, at the new members', um, orientation, any board member is welcome, if you get an email, to write back simply to acknowledge getting it. Thank you for emailing the board, I have received your email, I've, I've read it and I understand your concerns. But other than that, not I'm going to go out and find you a solution, or I agree with you, you're right, this shouldn't be happening. Those are all things that we as board members should not be answering back to the public to that. Uh, we got to keep our personal opinions out of it, and we have to understand where our, where our board role is and, um, acknowledge where the administration, um, needs to be involved in that as well.
Can I make a call?
Yes.
Um, by stating that you're utilizing the proper chain of command set forth by the district administration, we as board members, when we swear our, when we take our oath and we do our ethics, that's part of what we're agreeing to do as board members. So it's acknowledging that we're going to do our job in the way we're supposed to do our job. And, right? And when you take your governance, one, that's one of the major things, is following that proper chain of command. So I think by having this there in the goal is undermining what we've already done as board members in taking the oath, if you, if you know what I'm saying.
Ms. Belko?
I just want to answer that. We haven't had a defined chain of command out there for our public.
For the public to see.
For a very long time.
Okay.
So I think for this year, that goal is appropriate, because it is something that we finally have gotten. And, and now we can say it's there and it's appropriate and it's proper. Not that there wasn't a chain of command before, there was, it just wasn't published. So there's the, there's the rub, in my opinion. The other thing I would like to see added here is, and I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
No, no, that's fine, I'm just saying that that's, but, um, my, my point is that.
Oh, you're absolutely right.
When we take our oath of ethics and we're sworn into our board, and when we take our governance, as we're, we're, we have to do, that this is the proper chain of command that we have to follow.
Right.
So it's, it's like making a statement of something, of doing something we're supposed to do in the first place.
Up until very recently, it was very difficult for a member of the public to find the chain of command out there. The only other thing I just thought that, and, and I don't know, maybe Katie, you can, you can maybe frame this, but I would like to see that this, this board goal sort of is, um, is a, is a, is a stem from that CE and E committee, because it's really, that, they're the drivers of this. So I would love to see whatever other ideas come out from that committee would be part of how we're going to achieve this goal. And we're all responsible for what comes out of the committees, because we have to approve it. But I think this committee should definitely be the driver of this goal.
Absolutely.
I'm just thinking, like where it says utilizing the proper chain of command, maybe we say, you know, supporting community outreach by utilizing the proper chain of command, because that's tying the community.
Well, that, that's what it says. It's committed to transparency and increasing communications with the community to ensure all stakeholders are informed. One of the ways to do that is by using the proper chain of command, because there have been times where we're not using the proper chain of command. And now that it's out there and visible and. Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to add some?
Um, I, I, I don't want to inject myself into the board debate, um, but I've attended a few board meetings in my day. What I understood from the exchange between Ms. Scott and Ms. Belko was that the board isn't talking so much about utilizing the chain of command, but publicizing it, right? Making sure that the community is aware of it.
That's what it is, it's the word.
So my respectful suggestion would be simply to say, publicizing and utilizing. We're going to make sure the community is aware of it and we're going to use it ourselves.
Okay.
Right, I also had written down, um, like assisting and educating the public to utilize the, the proper chain of command, so that way they're aware, because we might know where people are supposed to go, but our goal should be making sure that everyone in the community knows where to go. So putting that in the bullet point instead of, you know, just utilizing, like assisting and educating the public to utilize, or something of that nature.
I'm sorry. No, you were right. I apologize for speaking.
I think that's what it is, it's the way it's worded.
Okay, so publicizing and utilizing the proper chain of command set forth.
And I just wanted to add one other thought.
Sure.
So we're supporting the use of all social media outlets for communication, like we said, we're introducing Sprout Social. But I'm also wondering if we could put something in there, like about written communication, ensuring community members receive written communication through, like the emails, I know we've sent out the survey and that kind of thing. So maybe the survey just becomes a yearly thing that we. So maybe the survey just becomes a yearly thing that we send out to the community to make sure everybody's contact information is updated. Any new members of the community that are interested in receiving communication, just putting some, something in there about written communication instead of just social media.
I was going to actually add, because I know Ms. Kirby, back when, you know, vaccinations were hard to get, you and I were both assisting members. I know a lot of seniors don't necessarily have social media, so, or even emails, addresses. I know I had to create one for one of the senior citizens in order to get their vaccinations. So also just making sure that we are communicating it. Because we do say ensure all stakeholders, but then in the bullet point, it only mentions the social media. So I don't know if we want to put and other outlets because, you know, putting it in, as we've sort of discussed at the CE and C meeting and the senior community newsletters and things of that nature to make sure that we're reaching out to as many as possible, not just through social media.
Okay. Supporting the use of social media outlets for communications as well as written.
Written yearly.
If you want to put a timeframe, you could say, you know, consistent annual, consistent annual, what was the word you just like? In other words, we want to say to the community, is everything appropriate? Is everything current?
Through annual survey, through annual survey, like us taking it through an annual survey of the community or through.
I don't know.
I think we're, I, I think we're, I think we're getting really in depth in trying to figure out how we're going to achieve the goal. The goal is committed to transparency and increasing communications with the community. These were things you could achieve it by. We could take that off and then just have, I added the, the board will achieve it by things that we.
I, I'm sorry, but I'm sorry, didn't raise my hand. I think we do need that line and I do think we need to define how we're going to, how we would, would make this goal happen. I think adding just another bullet that says, and all other means of communication, including written, email, newsletters, just, and just put it out there. We can do an annual survey if we get to it, but if something happens and we don't get an annual survey out.
Well, again, it's not us putting out the survey. That's the district.
Right.
May I, may I, Madam President?
Yes.
So again, subject to the approval of the board, right? That last, based on what I just heard, the last bullet point can be supporting the use of all appropriate communications comma, including but not limited to social media. That captures everything everybody just said, I believe.
Right. Okay.
Even just taking out social and just seeing all media outlets or anything of that nature, just to make sure that we're not exclusively working towards social media, although that is a goal of ours, but looking at others as well.
Okay. I will add that in. Anybody else? No? Okay. Board goal number five. The board is committed to making school security a priority by supporting all safety initiatives that are focused to always protect everyone in all district facilities. Anybody have any comments? No? Okay. All right. And that is our five goals that we collectively came up with. I can update this and resend it out to everybody and then put it on the October agenda for us to approve them. Is that, is that good with everybody? Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Gagliardi. Thank you, fellow board members. All right. Our next item on the agenda is our public forum for agenda items only. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and, is it residency? Name and township. That's right. You have four minutes to speak. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. Yeah. I'm Sunita Galati from 6267 U.K. Mandottownship. Yeah. So thank you for bringing up the topic of educational organization. So I'm the one, I think I wrote a letter to you guys. So I missed your earlier part, but I guess you discussed about that topic. I am a little confused because we have been running this language classes for the last 15 years. This is an educational nonprofit organization, totally volunteer, imparting Hindi language classes to the students. The language is not offered by Mandottownship School and kids want to learn this language. So we are imparting this language and gradually I see the, you know, as you discussed, the rents are going up. And I don't know what class we fall in, so I won't, you know, I want to see if we fall in class one because we are 501(c) tech exempt educational organization only. And the second thing is there's a new clause which has been added of three hours of, you know, mandatory booking of the facility use, although we take only for an hour. So we teach language class only for an hour, but I think we have to book it for three hours from this year. So, so I just want to know what is behind that, you know, the condition which has been imposed now.
Okay. Mrs. Chanley, would you like to speak on that?
I'm going to respond to the second part of your statement or question.
Okay.
A statement with a question. So what has happened is that we have seen over the last couple of years that it's not just about, let's say, it's not about making money, it's been costing the district and in turn the taxpayers money. So what's happened is the facilities use fees have not even covered the cost of security, maintenance, custodial and so forth. And when we looked at the surrounding districts, we were beyond, beyond underpriced in comparisons. So that is why, and that was the second part of your question, why has the fee structure changed? And that is, that is the reason why. The three hour minimum came to be, I, I, he's not here this evening, but in working in collaboration with Mr. Tag, he did see that in order for the preparation of having security here, having a setup and having a breakdown, the hour really didn't make sense from a fiscal point of view. So that's why he did the three hour, once again, very similar to our surrounding communities. As far as the first part of your question, and I would have to acquiesce to Ms. Allen and look, but I would believe it would be my understanding that you would be a tier two. I'm just doing that off the top of my head. So we understand that you're, that you are a nonprofit organization because I would say that numerous, I will not say all, but many, many, many fall into that category and that is why it is not free of charge. So that is why it falls into that. There are many organizations that utilize our facilities that bring wonderful programs to the children, many different languages, different cultural activities, but it, we can't allow it to cost us money because we have to be fiscally responsible. So if it's a cost to us, we have to be able to benefit in that regard as far as maintenance and, and custodial and security. So that's where it falls out. But as you heard and you may not have, if you came a little late, it will be a, a further conversation, a discussion probably under the policy. I know I brought up BG and T because it falls in that, but it really doesn't. But we cross over. It could even be CE and C really, I mean technically. So we do hear you and you are one of, I think, three people that did email.
Yeah.
In the last couple of weeks. So I hope I answered your question.
Yeah. Yeah, but for the last 15 years, I never saw a security or anything outside the school. And the custodians were there cleaning the, you know, school. And they always were there. It's like we just come in, go out, and they keep doing the work. And they never said that they don't come here when we are not there. So they are always there, even we are there or we are not there. So I was just wondering, the extra charge of custodian fee, you know, is it?
I don't want to speak to how Mr. Tag schedules the buildings because I'm sure that, you know, he has a particular way of scheduling, but whether or not you may perhaps be seeing, which is you're absolutely right, they're cleaning and they're getting ready for the next day, but perhaps that evening, there might be other events going on and instead of having one custodian, they may be paying for two custodians. We do pay for overtime when we have functions in our buildings. So, you know, we were, you know, losing money, for, for lack of a better way of saying it. And, you know, we have to make sure that we are responsible to the best of our ability. As far as the fee schedule, it does seem like a drastic change to many people that have been here for years, but we were so below anyone around us for so many years, it's, it seems more exuberant in the cost to someone like yourself in an organization that's been utilizing it, but in comparisons, perhaps it maybe this should have happened years, a little bit each year and it didn't happen that way. And I, you know, we'll definitely further the conversation, but as of right now, you know, the tiers remain as they are. But I definitely agree that we should be respectful of our community members to look and see if, if any changes will occur. I'm not saying they will be, but we definitely should look at them.
Okay, okay. Thank you. But we have 26 schools in New Jersey in different towns and we are the most expensive school. So the rest of the schools are not paying as much as what we are paying. So we have stopped our school now, although we registered 100 kids, but we had to go on Zoom class last week. They were supposed to start from last week, but we can't afford that. We can sustain that price. And the rest of the schools are still going with their regular, you know, class schedule. So, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
I'm sorry, I can just add to the lady what just she said. Either maybe.
Your name and your.
Yes. My name is Dilbag Gill and I'm from 42 Muirfield Boulevard, Monroe, time save. All right. This is the first year I really enrolled my kids in Hindi classes. I knew that our school don't offer this. Okay? And their fee is almost nothing. They just charging for me, charging me only for the books. And all of a sudden, they are telling me that my kids have to do Zoom classes. I don't know. I mean, whatever. And they are, they told me that fee has gone five time from 350 for one hour to all the way to 1500. I don't know who make this decision, how they make this decision. I don't know. But obviously there are going to be more people coming forward and register this. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Praveen Guram. I, I live in the 422 Morning Glory Drive, Monroe, okay? And my daughter used to be going to that Hindi's high, Hindi school. And she actually already graduated, okay? And I just want to tell you the benefit my daughter got, okay? It is actually said by research that kids that know multiple languages, okay? Their IQ and their understanding goes really, really well, okay? My daughter was part of that school. She did really well there. She has graduated. In fact, she was amongst the top graders in middle school. And not only that, she is now going into the Allied Health Academy at the high school, okay? She's from Monroe, okay? We live in Monroe. And I can tell you the benefit that the school has given about the growth for my daughter is something that I would also like future kids to also have that, okay? And not only that, my wife, she is a volunteer. She goes and teaches in that, in the Hindi USA High School, not for money, okay? But for all the, for what we got from the community is something, there is a way that we try to give back to it. And as, you know, Dr. Sunita Jai just said, that, you know, Monroe is charging the highest amongst all the 36 schools that, like, you know, where, whether it's Edison, South Brunswick and all the other schools that is there. I would really, really suggest if you can just take that look one more time, okay? If that price can be reduced, trust me, okay? These kids, I have no benefit because my daughter has already graduated, okay? But I can tell you the benefit that my daughter got, okay? That's why I'm here, okay? I could just have not come today and say, you know what, okay, my, my daughter is done, okay? No, that's not the point. I got so much benefit, my daughter has benefited so much. I would like that, these kids are from Monroe, okay? They will do well in their life. They will make Monroe proud. So I will just suggest that, please take a look at that decision one more time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And as Mrs. Chanley said, I believe the district administration, along with the facilities director, will revisit that and look into that. And I thank you for sharing that and that information. You know, we as a board are tasked with trying to be fiscally responsible and in doing that and in reviewing our policy and our fee schedules with our neighboring districts. We did see an opportunity to increase the fees to be more in line with what other districts are, are charging. Because we actually had groups and people that were using our building that were not using them in their town and coming over to Monroe because it was so, so far below what anybody was charging. So I think that this is a good opportunity for us to look back at it, the district administration to look back at the fees and reevaluate it to see if maybe it is too much of a drastic increase or not and, and really come up with an understanding for how we got to where we were. But I, I thank you for coming out and, and giving us that opportunity to hear you and, and your experience with those schools. And we will definitely be revisiting this.
One small thing, if she can give you that information data or other schools have been asking and what Monroe is asking, that they can make progress.
Sure. And I think she has reached out to the district administration and she can send that directly to Mrs. Chanley. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Gail DePaine, 356C Old Nassau Road. I have some questions and comments if I can get under the three minutes. When you were talking, Mrs. Belko, I'm sorry, Madam President, for Mrs. Belko, are your committee meetings timed that she could not get in everything that she needed?
Our committee meetings are, yes, we do have times for our committee meetings.
What are the, what, do you have an hour, hour and a half or?
They are generally an hour.
An hour? Okay. I was just wanting to ask. On your salary guide, what does 17% addition mean? What the teachers were listed in the salaries?
Sure. If I could ask you, if you have a list of questions, if you want to give us all of the questions.
Okay.
And then we can.
Whatever, that's one.
Go through them and answer them.
Okay. On, uh, goal, board goal number three, just want to make sure when you go for the contract that you are researching the areas with their contracts and, which I'm sure you are, making sure that Monroe is competitive with all the rest of the districts around this area in Middlesex County, because that's how you keep your good teachers. That's just my experience. Okay? Board policy number four. Have you ever, I mean, do you put like a board packet of information that you wanted to give out in all of your, gosh, now it went right out of my head. And don't time me because I'm a senior and I just forgot it. Real estate, thank you. Real estate agents that come in, is there a packet of board information in somebody that moves in new to the senior areas and your regular areas that lists all the board information that you're talking about? So they're going to come in immediately and see numbers and phone numbers that they can call for, things like that? Do you have that in real estate agency packets? That was another one. And I'm a little miffed about board policy number four. Public participation in board meetings. You're talking about being transparent and offering up everybody to come up here and speak, but I know you want to limit it and I don't think you should. I mean, where I used to be, it used to be five minutes. And you can get in a lot in five minutes. Four is really tough. And a lot of people want to say things, especially with the referendum coming up and so many things that are going on in this town. I think you should be allotted another minute and also, and answer all the questions that these people want, everybody here wants to hear answers on all people's questions because that's how we learn from each other. That's it.
Okay, yes. And speaking to that last point, that is why I, you know, I wanted to give you the opportunity to give all your questions upfront.
Okay.
And not take any of your time. We are not trying to limit the time of public forum. Public forum is four minutes. Previously, years back, was only three minutes. Last year, it was increased to four minutes. When we went to, when it was, when they took away the, it was three minutes when the clock was not being stopped. When it was being stopped, when it went to not being stopped, which was before we, we changed the policy last year to not stop the clock. We didn't reduce the time. So we, we continue to allow the public to have four minutes and stop the clock. Previously, the clock did not stop. That was the change. Nobody's looking to limit public forum, take away time. So I just wanted to spell that rumor. As far as the real estate, I'm not sure what the district administration provides, but I would, I would think that real estate agencies, maybe Ms. Arminio, if you want to chime in on that, as they're trying to sell houses to their clients, I would think that they would be including information on our school district. I know when I. I know when I purchased my home here in Monroe, they did hand me a sheet that they had put together with all of the information on our school district. And that is one of the big selling points of homes in Monroe Township is the school, the schools. I'm assuming we would provide anybody that called up and asked for information on our district, anything.
Well, you just said "they." If I can interrupt, who's "they"? Does the real estate person do it? Or do you, Monroe Township Board of Education provide it?
Well, we would provide it if requested. We're not contacting real estate agents. We're not, we're not selling their house or soliciting them to come here.
No, I'm not saying that they're, to sell the house. When they purchase the house, in a purchasing packet. Michelle, you should understand what I'm saying. And you give it to them then and say, you know, here's your municipal, municipal numbers, here's your Board of Education numbers, here's you can call for this, here you can, chain of command should be in there too, especially for the board. Because I know I was, that was a big question I was always asked by, by parents. Chain of command. Oh, I went right to the superintendent. No, you don't do that. You know, you have to follow chain of command. So I'm thinking that would be a good idea to put into a real estate company's packet when they buy the house. The, the real estate agent will know that and say, hey, here's the information. And there's Board of Education in their information in there too.
Absolutely. If they, if they contact the district, we happily put together a packet for them.
I think you should readily have it made and just give it to the real estate agents in your town.
Ms. Arminio, would you like to add?
Well, you know, real estate agents very often do it themselves. They provide their own information. But it's a good idea that maybe on, on the website, we can have a new homeowner's...
Yep.
...packet right on our website that we can just have someone print off. Even if the real estate agent doesn't do it, you know, a, a new homeowner's packet. It's not, you know, just talking about, not necess, you know, just for the Board of Ed. Just for the district, the Board of Ed, give you some ideas and, and, and leave it at that. I mean, a lot of the adult communities, if you go to their website, they have packets of information. It does make it much easier if you're, if you're moving into a community like that, that you know all the rules and regulations. So it, very similar, it would be much smaller if the board did it and just put like four or five pages on the website as a new homeowner packet. And I bet you, a lot of people who have lived here a long time would still utilize it.
Yes. I agree. Because people living here a while don't know what you have. So it, put all your information out there for the whole town, for all of the newcomers.
Well, it is currently out there. It is on our website. So if we're putting a new...
But it's not in a packet.
Not a packet.
Like, in other words, if you put all the schools...
No, but if we're going to say that, if we're going to say that they might not be able to go on the website, if that's where we're saying we're putting the, the packet to have it accessible on our website, well, you're already on the website, there's the information. Are you asking that we physically print out packets?
No. Not necessarily. But if you put all pertinent information, like five pages, all the, all the schools, all the numbers of the school, all together. Because the website, you have to sort of navigate through it in order to get all that information in one place. It's real, I can talk to you about it. We don't...
Yeah, no, maybe we can, we can definitely have a conversation in our community engagement committee.
It was just a suggestion because you're trying to get out so much information to everybody. And I know where I used to live, we had, we gave it to the real estate agents in town. I don't know how many are here in Monroe, but that was just something I wanted to bring up, just to, just to get all your information out.
Thank you.
Okay?
And you also had a question...
That seventeen percent thing?
Seventeen percent.
Yeah.
So basically, the way it works is if a teacher is going to be teaching an extra class above their contract...
Okay.
Then they, it equivalates, it actually equals as per the number seventeen percent of their contract.
Okay. I got it. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Yep. Hello, Michael Eskey. Yeah, fifty Mayberry Avenue, of course, here in Monroe Township. Excuse me. I just wanted to maybe make a suggestion or two, share some information. Yeah, I was very happy to see the, I guess, focus, increased focus on infrastructure funding. And I just want to maybe mention a couple of ideas to you. I know you folks are probably aware that I used to work for Exxon in Linden. And Exxon actually had, or still had at one time, five plants around the entire United States. And, you know, what we used to do was actually benchmark our plant against the other four plants, looking at all kinds of things. Administrative as well as operational, as well as expense type items as well. And I did do a little searching around after I was very happy to see it raised as an issue in the BG and T meeting. And I noticed that, that doesn't seem as if there's a lot of benchmarking going on within school districts. I guess around the country, I was reading that there's, there's a few that budget about five percent of their overall budget towards major infrastructure repairs and replacements. And I was thinking, what you might want to do going forward is maybe survey the districts here in Middlesex County. Yeah, I think you could probably get that information without too much effort and see just what the, the other school districts are actually spending on a maybe percent of overall budget basis on your major infrastructure repairs and replacements. And of course, the other piece would be, yeah, thinking about, considering, yeah, making the major infrastructure repairs, replacements budget, fixed budget. Come up with a number and hold that number on a year-by-year basis. And of course, in that matter, yeah, you could fund the major repairs and replacements. And try not to rob from that because that's important. In fact, I think we're seeing that now, you know, with what has to be done to the Applegate School. One other quick question, I just wanted to ask. I see at the very end of the agenda, it looked as if, as I read it, that there's going to be a motion to, what, approve proceeding with submission of the referendum package to the state? And I was wondering whether, I shouldn't say whether, whether you've actually had the time to even review the package at this point in time? Prior to it being submitted. I may be a little off base with that because I know there were a lot of words and I was trying to understand what that last bullet item was. And that's basically all I would want to share today. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Eskey. And which item number were you referring to, if we can...
Oh, it's, it's, it's at the tail end of the agenda, Chrissy. I think it's page twenty-nine. Yeah, maybe it's something that, oh, I don't want to say anything. You guys read it. It looked as if there were some, what, desire to proceed with submitting the referendum package? I think it might be item H. Item H, page twenty-nine. Thank you, Prakash.
So after the estimating process happens and we get a, you know, a, a project number, then that document needs to be submitted to the state. The state reviews it and identifies how much they're going to contribute towards the project. After that is done, that's when we have our total kind of potential referendum number. So this resolution allows, in between this meeting and next meeting, when we get the estimation done, instead of waiting three weeks idle, we can get it out to the state as soon as possible.
Oh, I see.
To get a number back.
Okay.
This isn't committing us to an, an April twenty-third date of X amount referendum. This just keeps us moving along the process.
Moving along.
Knowing that there are, have been and will probably continue to be delays when we submit things to the state. So this gets us moving along, anticipating estimations being completed sometime between now and the next board meeting.
Yep. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Prakash Parab, thirty-three Eton Drive. As, you know, Dr. Galati has talked about Hindi USA, please consider it. There are policies, there are flexibilities. How to, there are different education organizations come under, you know, let's say, whatever, you know, tax exempt and all. But how to evaluate their, what value adds, create some criteria. Because there are hundred students and the Indian population is growing. And this is a need. Hindi language is not taught in our school. If you bring a teacher to teach Hindi in our middle school and high school, how much it costs versus the free service provided? Take that all picture into criteria. That's my request. I'm not demanding anything. Give you the idea. So please consider, they're doing value-added to our school. Please do it. Thank you. Now, coming to the main topic, referendum. I have been here for the last six, seven years. The referendum is kicked, kicked, kicked away. And overcrowding at the school has been going on. In the master plan also, draft master plan, it talks about that when we build more houses, we have to consider overcrowding already overcrowded school. With, master plan says, we don't get staged funding to build the school. It is all impact to the taxpayers. Okay? There, you go and see the master plan which was written ten years back. This is all the vision. The master plan may have a Taj Mahal as a vision, but reality is, you know, go and see. They even said, we'll have recreation center on the south side. Did they do that? No. There is a vision that we'll have a town center near town, Monroe Township, something great vision Taj Mahal, near Route thirty-three. We'll build two thousand houses and we will have walking, the people can come to the town square. All that going on, sold by some contractor who has builder, who has interest to do that. Okay? We are debating that. We went to the master plan discussion. We were there. You know, affordable housing is going on for several years. Still, the communities which have been there for twenty years, they are still meeting the affordable housing. So don't delay. Look at last five years' projection. Look at next five years' projection. Go ahead. Want this overcrowded school to be resolved soon? This is a good plan. This was discussed last nine months back. What is going to be there in the middle school? What is going to be the high school? What is going to be there in Applegate? It has been discussed. Now every time come, oh, what is going on? I want the Board of Education to be active, moving forward. I tell you, if you guys don't have the referendum early April and start discussing to the public, we will come and demonstrate. Thank you. I'll tell you in a candid way. It will be front of the municipality. It will fund, we will bring the crowd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parab, Dr. Parab. And we are, I think, as our, the board has been moving along the process, we are committed to coming to the April twenty-twenty-three referendum. And as you see on the agenda, as Mr. Eskey pointed out, we are moving forward. We have the estimator working up those numbers and that will go to the state. We will see what we get back then from the state as far as their contribution to the project, which I also want to bring back, that conversation. Once we get that, I think it's important when Ms. Arminio, myself, Dr. Lehman, and Ms. Fabiana went to Trenton and met with the Assistant Commissioner and Senator Greenstein, we were given percentages that the Department of Education said they give for these types of projects. And I'm very interested to see when that, those numbers come back, if that matches that. And if it does not, I will be on the phone with Senator Greenstein and be asking why they told us one set of numbers and percentages and why they're not committing to that. Because we were assured that the state gives up around forty percent of the cost in aid back to the school districts. Now, I know Mr. Take had reached out to some individuals at the Department of Education too, and they explained other numbers to him. So when we were there that day, it was clear, and I will tell you on behalf of the board, that what was told to us that day, we will go back down there and we will, we will hold their feet to the fire of what they told us to say. Because they told us we should be coming out to our community and tell the community that this is the percentage that they give back to us. So I, we are, this board is committed to getting to that referendum and we are committed to getting whatever funding we can for this project from the Department of Education. So, yes, Mrs. Chanley?
I just wanted to say that I greatly appreciate Dr. Parab's passion. Because I do agree, and I, I would like the public to know, that although we haven't come out with the visuals yet and we haven't come out with the particulars, we really want to be so transparent that we're waiting for the estimator because we'd like that amount. Whatever that amount would be, we've been talking ranges. You know, our first presentation was ninety-five to one hundred and five. Then it was a hundred to a hundred and seven or so forth. So every other Friday, we have a meeting and we work diligently to talk about what the visuals will look like, where is the placement going to be? We have just secured one of the tables at Oktoberfest. So we're talking about bringing it all out there. So even though it's been quiet as far as, there has been no media blast, it doesn't mean that we're not working towards exactly what you are saying, sir, on behalf of the community. Because April twenty-twenty-three is going to happen. Mr. Take says we are right on time. And unfortunately, we wish we could be the estimator, but because we're not, we want to be so transparent, we don't want to have this range again. Even if we are unsure of what the state's going to give us, we might be able to say, well, we definitely not, might be, we will say, this is the cost based upon the estimator and then the number from the state will be what it is. We may have to fight with them, but it will be whatever it is. So we are absolutely moving forward for that twenty-twenty-three April. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Adam Elias, I'm a resident of Monroe Township. I came to the meeting with a very pointed question, but given the discussion over goals and things like that, I wanted to go into a little bit of commenting. But my question was, and I was hoping to see Mr. Take here tonight, I read something very alarming this morning. I know that Governor Murphy has a plan to really electrify New Jersey. Wants to shift New Jersey away from fossil fuels to full electric use in a very short amount of time that many have suggested is very unrealistic. But today, I read that, just last week, the Department of Environmental Protection has passed some regulations that are going to require the conversion of boiler systems to electric heating in a very short order. And that this would actually have an impact on about fifteen hundred schools in the state of New Jersey. So I wanted to know whether this has been discussed at all in the Building Grounds Transportation Committee, whether we are aware of whether or not any of our schools are going to fall within the purview of that? The article suggested that it could cost up to two million dollars to retrofit any given facility from a current boiler system to an electric system. So not only that, we get about nine million dollars from the state, this would actually fall on the landowner. So to the extent that the Board of Education or the township owns any of these schools, that would really fall on the shoulders of the schools, on the, on the taxpayers. So if this is not something that has already been explored in those committee meetings, I would strongly urge that those answers get explored very soon. Having said that, I saw that the goals that were put up, I don't know if five was the limit to goals. I don't know if there's any room for additional goals. Always want to have more goals. And I know it's hard if you only have five to try to figure out what are the five most important ones. But I think there's a major missed opportunity here to have a goal of reconnecting with what's going on in Trenton. I think, living in New Jersey the last two years, we've learned a lot about how things that happen in Trenton can have a serious impact on our day-to-day lives, whether it be from COVID policies, you know, mask policies, vaccination policies, on the health end, or whether it be based on curriculum. A lot of parents were concerned about, you know, standards that came down about curriculum from the state. Just what I just talked about as far as the regulations from DEP affecting the schools. I know a lot of boards throughout the state have a legislative liaison. It's a position, not necessarily a committee, where someone will report on things that are going on in the state. And I think that would really benefit this community, just to update every month on what's happening. I think, I don't know if that's something that could be a goal or if that's something that maybe we could all try to work on together. But it's really helpful to know because these are not things that are publicized very well. A lot of them are done intentionally without publicity. So it's good for someone to be following up, not just when it actually happens and it's implemented, but when the, the bills are moving through the legislation process so that we can comment, we can go to Trenton, we can actually get engaged and get more feedback as it's happening in real time. I also, as far as, I know there was some discussion about the chain of command and emails and not knowing how to respond to them. I was just going to make a personal suggestion. You know, in my business, there was a period of time where people would email the wrong staff members in my firm about questions, like maybe someone in the personal injury department would email somebody in the real estate department. So what we started to do was set up an auto message. I don't know if this, what the legal implications are on for that, that would have to be deferred to board council. But an auto message that would come out saying, you know, acknowledging the receipt of the email saying, you know, this is the chain of command. I also work in real estate and we always have disclaimers, you know, in the actual email that any kind of wire instructions are going to come in a very specific way. It's always at the bottom of every single email so that it's drilled in everybody's head. If there's a concern about the chain of command being drilled in people's heads in the public, I think it would be very beneficial to either have that incorporated in an auto message for people to email or even just incorporated in the signature line of every email to the extent that that's permitted by law. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Those are very great suggestions. I think that the board can discuss that through our committee meetings and look into having somebody focused on the board of, maybe through our Community Engagement Committee of legislator. As far as the facilities, Mrs. Chanley, maybe I could ask that you follow up with Mr. Take. Mr. Take is unfortunately wasn't able to be here. He is out sick today. So that is why he's not at this meeting. But if we can follow up with him and find out, I'm sure Jerry probably does know because he's usually up to date on that. But thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. And if the administration will look into that, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
I don't know what your policy is. Can somebody come up again?
No, unfortunately, no. We have a second public forum later on in the agenda, but it's only one time.
It has to do with what was discussed now.
But it's only, our policy is only one time.
You should change it for somebody to be able to come up in case they have something else to say.
That's been a longstanding policy.
Okay, just, it's just a suggestion.
Even Michelle is in agreement with that policy.
Unfortunately.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Right, seeing that, we will close this public forum. And our next item on our agenda is our Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman?
Yep. It's a brief report tonight. I just wanted to welcome the staff, students, all our teachers back, all our administrators back while they were in the summer. But we're back in full swing of things now. Our community's back. Parents are engaged again and it's great to see everything up and operational. I think we worked out a little kinks in the first couple of days of school and that's typical for any school district. And we continue to move ahead and we're excited about it. I do have one exciting announcement. I shared it with the board in the confidential last week. But we were notified last week that Ms. Mrs. Venitha Gershankar, Ms. G is what we affectionately call her throughout the school district. She's a teacher of technology education at the high school here. She was identified as one of 57 teachers in the United States for the designation of Project Lead the Way Outstanding Teacher. It's a specific note to that, she was one of 13 teachers nationwide to earn recognition in engineering. This recognition is significant given the nationwide commitment to STEM, teaching STEM within diverse public school systems. The effort of Ms. G to have allowed Monroe Township to simultaneously build out a highly competitive and rigorous programming alongside of a fully inclusive adaptive STEM programming that prepares all learners for relevant 21st century post-secondary experiences. Her leadership has significantly enhanced our overall academic culture here at the high school and throughout the district and provides countless new learning opportunities for all types of learners. So it's a tremendous recognition for her and we're very proud of her. She also oversees our robotics team. So she's here on weekends and travels and competes throughout the state with our team. So she's just an amazing teacher and this is a great recognition that we found out just last week. She was kind of shared with. So thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Dr. Lehman? Okay, our next item is our Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Chanley?
I'd just like to take an opportunity to piggyback on what Dr. Lehman has said. We want to welcome everybody back. And it's definitely a team effort. We always say success is always a team effort. It's something that I adhere to because we opened the school successfully. We had a little bit of a hiccup to no one's fault with the situation with the poll being down. But we are so fortunate that we are able to work just cooperatively, you know, between security, facilities, maintenance, custodial, administrators, teachers, central office. I mean, I could just name everybody, the support of the board. We had a very successful opening. It's very exciting to be back full time in person to see one another. And we're very pleased that we had, we really did have a great opening and the children are very excited, very excited to be in school. So I did want to just take a moment to say that. I also would like to acknowledge that all of the schools did activities, events, acknowledgements, moments of silence and so forth for Patriot Day. We know that 9/11 this year did fall out on a Sunday and it was celebrated and commemorated. And when I use the word celebrated, I don't mean it in a positive way because it was a very, very sad time in our country. And it was just a very sad time for the Northeast area in particular. So they commemorated and respected those people who lost their lives as well as those people who wound up giving their lives and even becoming ill later on in life due to the tragedy of that occurrence. And they did it in very different ways, very age appropriate in the elementary schools, middle school and high school and so forth. And the newsletter that will be coming out is going to be once, so it's going to be in the middle. So often it will just reference things that have already occurred. It will reference things to occur. It will acknowledge celebrations of holidays. I want to wish a very happy La Shana Tova, which is the Jewish New Year for Rosh Hashanah and Day of Atonement, which will be Yom Kippur, which will be in October. Both will occur prior to the next board meeting. I'm going to really make an effort to school myself on all of the holidays because we are a very inclusive community and that is why we're also looking at our calendar because that is so important. Even though we're running out of days, we all know that. We need a longer school year. But I didn't say that we wanted a longer school year, but we actually do need one and so forth. So we're just, we're very, very lucky and we're very fortunate because we have a great community. And sometimes we agree to disagree, but we move forward to do what's best for kids. And that's so important. So on that note, I only have one retirement. So I want to wish Sharon Lynch, who is a secretary at Monroe Township Middle School. She was the secretary that I hired there and now she is under Dr. James Higgins. And she will be leaving us in January. She's put in our official papers. She's very excited. I wish her well as she is a grandmother and a great grandmother just recently. So I do wish her well. And at this time, under a 10-member vote, I will move forward with recommending that the board approve the attached personnel items A through L, excuse me, A through AL with the exception of AF and AG.
Can we make a motion to a motion? Second. Okay. Is there any questions? Ms. Arminio?
Yes. On page eight Q, I just want to, before I make a statement, I have no issues with any of the names that are on here. I just have a general question about, and this goes for anything else on the agenda that talks about this. Changes to salary guide, it says approve the following salary guide changes retrospective. So my question is, any of the salary guide changes, are they within the budget? Now, that was, we don't have a new budget yet for this year, right? So we're making these changes. We have
We have our approved budget.
We have our approved budget. So they are within this approved budget. That's what I need to ask.
I can have Mr. Allen speak to the particulars, but it is a contractual requirement. It is a contractual requirement that once we have confirmed that the appropriate
That's fine. These are the normal step.
Absolutely.
And they are within our budget.
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Allen, did you want anything or that's good?
Not a problem with that. Next one is S. Again, has nothing to do with the person. It has to do with the position. The truancy officer, the job description, I thought was for our security officer, our director of security.
I'll be happy to talk.
Yes.
So we did make a change. So the truancy officer position is located in the MTEA agreement. And it is different than the change that we went with when we hired Mr. Selby. He is the director of security and residency. Those are two very different things. So that is allocated within the contract and there's a specific job description because that is working in combination with parents and attendants and nurses and so forth to help our children be back on track to be in school on a regular basis.
So truancy officer is definitely different than residency.
That is correct.
Excellent. And let me just see if I have anything else on that. And thanks for the clarification. And page 14 AK, number two, our Oprah Secretary. Ready?
Page 14 is the next section.
No, we're going down to AL, right?
AK.
So page 12.
14.
It's AK.
It's A.
In this section, it's AK.
I pull, I picked up the new, I don't know, we keep changing our agendas.
AK.
AK.
AK number two, right?
Correct.
Under
Under Oprah Secretary, let's just talk, it's again, it's about the position.
Okay. No, I see it. And I apologize, but in my book, it's on page 12. Sorry about that.
Okay. Well, who has the updated agenda? Let me hear you.
I thought I did, but that's okay. I'm with you. I see it. I can follow AK.
Okay. Well, I want the public to know what we're talking about. So the Oprah Secretary, is that a part-time position?
That is correct. And that's also per a contract. That's part of the MTBOESSA.
Okay, say that.
I want to make sure of the right letters. MTBOESSA.
So that means Monroe Township.
Board of Education, is it central office? Wait, she's going to help me.
Support staff.
Support staff.
Ah, this is the support.
I always leave out one letter. That's why I was looking at Dr. Lehman. It's like an ongoing joke.
Does this position, does this person have another job with the district or is it just one part-time?
No.
Okay. And there will be training? Is there
Oh, yes. And we have her scheduled for the training and she's been working directly with the attorneys. Our goal is to have her as properly educated in the areas to lessen the cost of utilizing the attorneys on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you.
And she, just to make note, that was a change in the start date. She's already been approved.
Right. Okay. But this is somebody different than we had originally?
No. All she did was change her date of start.
Okay.
That is the exact individual that was previous board approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ratner, you have a question?
Yeah, just one. Like us two quick things. First, just because I remember this having happened in the past, we usually had gotten information about home instruction with COVID. I know the policy hasn't changed. Is that information still going to be shared regarding virtual home instruction because that hasn't changed yet? That makes sense? Like, are there students that are receiving that? I know it's not in this area, but it's before that in the Superintendent's Report for, I said, letter B, home instruction. So I was just wondering about that. And
I think I, I think I hear you asking me if the details of the course will be shared on a regular basis as it has in the past, even though the policy hasn't changed. Is that what you asked? Did I get that right?
Yeah, basically. So the policy hasn't changed. People who are still out because of COVID restrictions are still receiving the same things that they had received last year as of now. So they're still receiving potential virtual home instruction and things of that nature.
So that when we have that information, so I would assume then, let's say, with a very, very small number, but let's say in October, it would make sense then, those people that were board approved for either home instruction or live streaming would then be provided in my Superintendent's Report. At this time, it's the cart before the horse. We don't have that information. Because we have that information, but once payment comes to fruition, then it would be included.
Okay, sounds good.
That's what you asked, right?
Yeah, I just want, you know, that clarification. I wasn't sure if for the first two weeks, hopefully there wouldn't be too many, but you never know. Anyway, and then my other question, and I know one of the members of the public had asked about the 17%. I noticed that there's a few teachers that have 34%. I was just curious, I don't know how the block schedules work necessarily at the high school. I believe that they're, because it's an 10-member vote, they are all high school employees. So I was just wondering how that exactly works.
So the goal with the 17%, first of all, is to be able to, it can happen for two reasons. Either an extra section needed to be added or most of the time, we have, in this particular incident with 34%, we have an employee that's being released from another district. So while we wait for the employee to be released, the 60 days contractual requirement as a certificated employee to be released, we need to cover those classes. And based upon schedule determines who gets that. So of course, in a perfect world, we would always want to share the ability for individuals 17% where necessary. But in this particular case, and I believe there was one, possibly two, but I do know right off the top of my head because I did look at that, there was no other individual based upon the schedule requirements that could do that job. It had to be that person in order to do it. And I believe it's only until November.
Okay, I guess just knowing, and again, my eldest is in sixth grade, so I haven't experienced this yet. But if I recall, there's four classes each day that high school students receive in addition to lunch. I don't remember exactly how it works, but by adding 34%, they're teaching two extra classes.
Well, a teacher teaches two and three. So therefore, if you're teaching two extra, perhaps on A day, you're teaching an extra block for 17%. And on B day, you're teaching an extra block in order to compensate for the fact that we're waiting for the teacher to come. And in this incident, we are waiting for a teacher to come.
So it'd be like instead of two and three, it would be three and four.
Correct. Right. And that could also happen in the middle school, just so you're aware. So a teacher could have to pick up two classes based upon the way their schedule works and they could be missing their prep and team planning. We have no choice because you need, it always is, the schedule drives the need. So based upon who is available to teach the class is who would get that position.
Okay. And so just for clarification, to continue consistency for the students, that's why rather than doing like a coverage period, you want the same teacher doing it every day, which is why it's there.
And it is much better for continuity of instruction and they are getting exactly what they should be getting. And they're, they're on par with anybody else that might be teaching another class so that when the new teacher starts, they can hit the ground running.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Mrs. Tagliaferro, can we have a roll call, please? Ms. Bora?
Yes, to all.
Ms. Fabiana?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Dr. Lehman's going to interject the exceptions.
So it's recommended that the board approve attached personnel items AF and AG.
So move.
Second.
Is there any questions? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Tagliaferro, can we have a roll call, please? Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiana?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Continuing on, under a nine-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items AM through CF.
Can we get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to make a Yes. I'd just like to make a comment regarding the second reading of the public participation in board meetings below P0167.
What other?
I thought we were.
Personnel.
I'm sorry. I'll wait.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
Did you have a question, Ms. Ratner?
No, no.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Tagliaferro, can we have a roll call, please? Ms. Fabiana?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, to all except we're Q's on item BV for D Ratner.
So nerd it. Ms. Arminio?
I want to be clear where we're at. So we are at
Personnel items, nine-member vote.
Okay. Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Under a 10-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve board action items A through R.
Get a motion?
Move. Second.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
Michelle?
Go ahead.
Ms. Bora?
I had a comment and I did have a discussion with Mrs. Chanley, but I wanted to make a public comment on it. Item M has approval of self-assessments done by our schools for determining the grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. And it's, all the schools took the self-assessment and on an average, most of the schools scored 74 to 75 out of a highest score of 78. But middle school self-assessed themselves at 65 out of 78. This could mean two things, that middle school is doing the right assessment, the way it should be done, leaving room for improvement. Or middle school is asking for more resources to do their job right. I wanted to raise that concern to Mrs. Chanley to pursue this, look into this further because it does stand out from rest of the school self-assessment. And that was the only comment I had.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Okay, on FP, the policy, it's really a bylaw 0167, public participation in board meetings. I am going, and I should have, I failed to mention this at the last meeting, although I did vote no, I believe, that I think we are going in the opposite direction of our board goal. I do believe that a couple of things are starting to change the transparency that we have so put forward in the last few years. So I really think we should reevaluate this. And one of the things I've noticed, and maybe I can get clarification, because it's participation at the meetings, I no longer see cameras here. And the cameras don't focus on the, those who, the members of the public who speak. So I'm wondering why that's happening and if it's going to change. Because I thought it would also improve the skills and education and instruction of our children if we had, you know, multiple cameras. I would, I would think that that would be a good experience for them. But I'm primarily But I'm primarily, you know, concerned about it because it has changed the dynamic of the meeting. If you, if you review the meeting, you only see public participation, you only see the backs, their backs and the backs of their head. We no longer have a camera zooming in on either the public, and I think it's still zooming in on the board members who speak. But I'm sorry to see that we removed the camera from the public. So that's part of my objection to this particular bylaw, but also in keeping with what we just said our goals would be for more transparency and participation. I think that's a contradiction, so, thank you.
When did the camera get removed?
Over the summer, over the summer, there was lack of.
Participation?
Not participation, but there was not enough staff to manage.
Staff to manage, okay.
So then we're.
But now that we're back in.
Right.
Full session.
So I hope we reevaluate.
Can I call point of order here? Is that even in the policy?
No.
Okay, so can we continue with this phone?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Belko.
Um, I guess I have a question.
Ms. Ratner?
A point of order. I had a question regarding this policy as well as the facility usage policy. I wanted to know if, to make sure we're doing things appropriately, I should separate those to have the discussion and we're voting on the rest, or just ask my questions at this time? Okay, so my question, I only have one about the public participation. I just wanted to get clarity on number two in public participation about, it's limited to four minutes duration. It shall not include any response by a representative of the board. At the end of the four minutes, the participant's time shall be over. So with that, I know we're asking people to bring all their questions at once, make their statement, and then we can answer the questions if the chair believes it's necessary. If they have time left on the clock after that, are they allowed to reply to their responses based on the changes to the policy?
No, because the clock would continue running. Wouldn't stop.
Right, they, it would, it would.
The clock would stop if you're answering them and they've asked all their questions. If they have, if they were still at the podium up until four minutes, they could continue to talk.
Right.
At four minutes.
That's it, right.
That's it. They get a full four minutes to talk. So if they can ask their questions in a minute and a half.
Well, no, the clock would not stop. That's the, that's the change.
That's a change, okay. My misunderstanding.
It would be, so when you have a speaker at the microphone asking que, so you come up, you have your four minutes to make your statements, ask whatever questions. It's not intended to be a dialogue back and forth, so that if they're done and they say, "I'm done now, please answer my questions." The clock still runs. If there's still time remaining, absolutely.
I guess my confusion is, it says the four minutes shall not include any response by a representative of the board to any participant's questions. So the way I could read it is that someone, instead of doing the back and forth like we had, but they could ask all their questions upfront, but the four minutes doesn't include the response. So then, once they're done speaking, the clock stops for the answers, and then they can reply.
No, that's, the clock is not stopping is the change to it. It doesn't include, so basically, what the policy is setting forth is to not have what used to happen prior when we didn't stop the clock. So what would happen was, members of the public would be cut off by either the board president or members of the administration and speak and run out the clock, and then the timer would go off and you'd be told to go sit down. This was putting in a language to say that whoever's presiding over the meeting or administration would not interrupt the speaker during those four minutes, that you have those four minutes to say whatever statement you want and ask whatever questions. And at the end of that, then the questions could be answered. And when their time ends, if we're still giving, if we're answering the question, we're not taking up their time to answer the question.
Okay. And then, I don't know, I mean, I can ask my questions about the facility usage now, or I wasn't sure if you wanted to focus on this policy first, if anybody else had anything, and then I could ask my questions regarding that.
I just had an observation on this, and I, I'm not sure when the exact implementation of the policy is gonna happen, but from my observations today, if, if somebody stopped talking on the public forum, the clock did stop, and they did, there was back and forth, and the clock started again. So I, I think whatever we decide, whichever way we decide to go, we would just have to be very consistent with this, with the directions that we give to the administration on not stopping the clock. You know?
Yes.
When they're done and they can't answer.
Well, it had to stop today because that's part of the policy, yes.
Okay, so it's gonna change now?
If it's approved.
If it's voted, all right, got it.
Okay, regarding the usage of the school facilities, which is policy 7510, for anyone who may be following along, I wanted to ask a few questions, and I could be wrong. I know I attended the policy meeting this month. I don't remember reviewing the second reads, but I, okay, we didn't, all right, so I'm all right there. There were a few things that I definitely highlighted, and now I can't find it at all. Oh, here we go. So I guess my first thing is on, there's no pages, are there? Oh, page 612, under item E, number one, letter C. I guess I'm a little bit confused with the language there. It says, "The use must not involve gambling or games of chance. For purposes of this regulation, the terms gambling and games of chance shall not include the following." And it mentions 50/50 raffles, ice cream bingo, tricky shake raffles, all of those things. So when it says it does not include the following, does that mean that?
You're allowed to have it.
So all of these, these things can take place at the school? Okay, I just wanted clarification. I know that's something that has come up.
And that wasn't a change to the policy. That was in there originally.
All right. And then, I was curious with item, I can actually skip item D, but, so then, item G, it says, lighting equipment, ventilation systems, and thermostatic controls may be operated only by an employee of the district. If there is an organization, and again, I know these aren't all changes, but since we were reviewing the policy and I noticed these things, reading them, is there an employee that's here, I guess the custodian would be the one changing that? I also know, like, in terms of stage lighting, which is a little bit different, the outside organization has to utilize the approved vendors. And I was wondering if there's, in the policy, the minimum amount, because if I recall, it was 10 hours that they are required to contract the vendor in order to use them for sounds and lighting and things like that. And I guess I was just wondering if that's something that has to be put in the policy because there's the minimum cost, or if that's just a separate form? And then my final question about it was just on page 10 with letter G, where it says, "Board members and school officials are entitled to full and free access to any part of the school premises for any use. No user may exclude a board member or school official." I was just, because we were looking, I was wondering exactly what the meaning behind that was, that was all.
And any school official or Board of Education member is entitled to attend any event being held in our school district.
Okay, so that we can act, we can go to anything, but we can't utilize it for any purposes? That was just confusing to me.
No, so if there's, if there's an event going on here, we, as a board member or school official, administration can attend. We can't use the building for whatever needs we want, but we can, if there's an event, we're allowed to come and attend during any use.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, I guess just the only thing that I was curious about with the regulation.
None of those were changes on there.
So I guess with the regulation and the changes in the fees, I just was wondering if the minimum that they have to contract for the, I think it was 10 hours, I forget, I think it was when we approved the budget, perhaps, if that has to be something that's in the policy, or if that's just.
No, that's part of the fee schedule, and the fee schedule is not part of the policy.
Okay. All right, I think that is everything for there. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. And just so you know, going forward, when, when the board has no questions or sending back a policy back to the, to the committee, if there's nothing to discuss, nothing came out of the board meeting, generally, you don't go through all of the policies for second read. So that's, because there was nothing that was asked to be looked at back at the committee level, that's why there were, there were no changes and it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, Mrs. Tagliaferro, maybe we have a roll call, please? Ms. Scott?
Can I ask me first?
Yes. I do it random.
You just threw me off there, man. Yes to all except for P-0167.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, but no to policy 0167.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes on all, but no to P-0167.
Ms. Belko?
Yes to all.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes to all, no on policy 0167.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes with the exception of policy 0167. Thank you. Okay, and.
May I ask a question? So that policy change is not approved, correct?
Correct.
It was a 4-4 vote, so it would not, did not carry.
It did not carry. So we go back to the policy language before this was changed?
Yes.
Correct? Thank you. Just want to be clear. Thank you.
Okay. Under a nine-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve board action items S through Y.
May we have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, Mrs. Tagliaferro, may we have a roll call, please? Ms. Ratner?
Yes to all.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
If I may, that concludes my report, but I would like to welcome two administrators to our happy home. Mr. Eric Laurie will now be the Assistant Principal at Monroe Township Middle School, and Ms. Lauren Dominic will be the Acting Assistant Principal to replace Aleve at Monroe Township Middle School. So I welcome them both. Thank you. They were here. They may have since gone. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next item on our agenda is our business administrator's report. Mrs. Allen?
It is recommended that board action items A through H be approved by consent. Roll call?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Are there any questions? Mrs. Ratner?
Uh, just a quick question, to actually, the first is, if members of the public, are they able to see the bill list? Or is that, if they are, it's on the agenda? Okay, because someone had wanted to see something and they weren't able to, and I just wanted to clarify. I was able to see it when I wasn't logged in, so I assumed it was, but I just wanted clarification. And then just because, you know, it has been discussed, you know, and I appreciate the comments made by a member of the public, I just want to confirm that by going forward with item H, which is regarding the referendum, should there be a discussion with the township that states that we're going to have a significant increase in numbers that doesn't put us in a spot where we still couldn't modify it if needed? This just allows us to continue moving along.
So, so this is submitting the current projects to the state for approval, and as it states in the botnet, in that first paragraph under H, for which requests state funding and wishes to seek approval for the DOE. So this is the next step in the process, and, you know, if there's a submit, if there's a change to the project, then everything that this project, this represents would have to be changed. We'd have to resubmit again with larger, smaller project.
And we may not, and I just want to state, I think it's important that we are moving forward for the April 2023 based upon what we currently have. Any changes could absolutely delay going out to a referendum for 2023 in April. I, I would just want to be transparent and make that statement.
Okay, which I appreciate. I know that we had made, you know, back in May or June, the modification, moving from, some of them from the middle school to the high school, and at that point, we were still allowed, and I just wasn't sure where the exact cutoff was. I'm assuming it's, it's this right here.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Tagliaferro, maybe we have a roll call, please? Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, except requues on item B, which is the bill list, on just for the reimbursement for D-Ratner.
So noted. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
It is recommended that board action items, item I, be approved by consent. Roll call?
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? All right, can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Tagliaferro? Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
And Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. And that concludes your report, correct? Okay, our next item on the agenda is our board president's report. I will keep it short. I want to start off by congratulating the entire administrative team, our teachers, staff, and everyone who had a hand in the successful opening of our schools earlier this month. It is a huge task getting ready for new school years to begin. On behalf of the board, we recognize all the efforts that were made. I'm excited for this new school year and new beginning for our school district. This Friday is the homecoming football game. The district will be celebrating the official ribbon-cutting ceremony of our new turf field and track. I hope everybody from our community will come out and partake in the celebration. Here is going to be a wonderful night. The weather is supposed to be beautiful. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to come together as a community and celebrate, especially for our students and our athletes and our entire community as they participate and are able to use our fields as well. That concludes my president's report. Our next item on the agenda is other board business. Anybody have anything? Mrs. Belko?
Yeah, I just wanted to report to the board. It was very interesting that Mr. Elias came up and started talking about getting more involved legislatively, because on a whim, I signed up for the New Jersey School Board Association Legislative Committee meeting, on a whim. It happened to be a Saturday morning. I said, I got nothing better to do on a Saturday morning, so I sat for three hours and I listened to the School Board Legislative Committee, which I found to be very interesting. And I have with me, and I will share this with the rest of the board, is some documents that they sent, which was part of the agenda. There's also going to be a PowerPoint. One of the, Senator Cochran's, one of his people that works with him in his office, did a really nice presentation about upcoming legislation that is important for schools and school boards. The School Board Association talked about what they support, what they don't support, and what legislation has come forward. And I actually found it very interesting. There were some things that they did pass, and I'll just really, and I have the legislative numbers, if you want them, I'm not going to sit here and read them, but there are some recent things that went through was, there's an electric school bus program. Not all school districts will be involved in it, but there's a program. And the first year of it will be, will be coming. There's a, the school threat assessment team, which we already, we knew was coming, and we already, I believe we're kind of already ahead of the curve on that. There's project grants for securing our children's future fund. There's field tests for the class of 2023. All of these are laws and legislation that the New Jersey School Board Association has supported. There's also a law about extending the life of school buses before authorized as the chief administrator to allow one-year extension in subsequent two years because of the pandemic and all that stuff that went on. There's a couple of other pieces here about free meal, school expansions. There's some legislation out there that they're working on for staffing shortages, school mapping, student civic engagement. There's a lot of things out there that I think, you know, I have to tell Mr. Elias, I think you're right. I think we do need to be spending more time in Trenton and, and being on top of this stuff and being part of this. And, and, you know, I, I honestly didn't think that I was really gonna enjoy myself Friday morning, by Saturday morning, but I actually did. I learned a lot, and I learned a lot of different things about what's happening. There are some workshops coming up, and you all get this in your emails from the New Jersey School Board Association. So, and it's, you can sign up. There, some, these things are free just to attend and to go, and the chat goes crazy. I mean, it was very interesting to do that. But they were really, one of the things that they really were hot about that they, they're not really happy about is the increase. And I know we don't use the school health benefits program from the state. We use something different, but their prices for the school went through the roof. So their, the School Board Association is trying to work with them on that. They do, one of the things they did share was a letter that they sent out to the Acting Commissioner, Ms. Allen McMillan, in reference to the. Commissioner, Ms. Alan McMillan, in reference to the non-support of the early smart testing thing, the smart assessments that they're, we were already apparently doing, based on my, the report from our young students here, and it's, it's a lengthy letter, I am certainly not going to bore you by reading it, but it did go out, it was signed by people from NJEA, Association of School Administrators, School Boards Association, Council of County VOTAC, New Jersey Principals and Supervisors, Garden State Coalition, Save Our Schools, New Jersey, New Jersey Public Charter Schools, and New Jersey Children's Foundation. So, this initiative of these tasks are not supported by most of these education institutions. I found that very, very interesting. Not a big fan of a lot of tests either, but I found this very interesting, that educators are not supportive of this, so I thought that was an interesting, anybody who wants to read that is certainly so free to come up and do that, but I found it really very interesting, the next meeting is December 10th, so it'll be coming through if anybody wants to join me on a Saturday morning with a cup of coffee and, you know, something, it was very interesting.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you don't have somebody assigned to legislature of the board? Like, there's, it's not, our board, we have someone assigned that reports, I guess it's what, every three months, I think there's the legislature meeting, so there's not one specifically on-
Karen is on this, she's the school board delegate, I forget who this-
Oh, you're the delegate.
So usually that personal-
Yes.
Usually that person reports to us on the board whenever there's the delegate assembly, and then you also have to, if you want to get certified, you have to attend so many legislature meetings.
Yes. Does anybody have anything else? Mrs. Ratner?
So along those lines, and obviously it's been covered, but, you know, definitely a great job across the board, I mean, the teachers, administrators, everyone, not us as a board, on opening of school, lots of happy kids going to school. I had the opportunity to attend one of the ice cream socials at Milliken Woodland, and, you know, it was just really good to see kids being excited to be at school. I also, you know, definitely agree that there were some great ideas from public forum that I would really love to move forward on. One, having not only necessarily a legislative liaison, which, you know, I attended the delegate assembly back in April or May it was, and then I know there's another one coming up in November. So the next delegate assembly is in November, they also have obvious sessions, you know, all the time. I had attended an informational session with a, I believe it was actually a rep for Senator Vin Gopal, who, he's the Chair of the Education Senate Committee, however, I think he had had a newborn baby, and so somebody was covering on his behalf. But, you know, there's definitely a lot of information, and then, of course, you know, next month, they'll have the agenda for the delegate assembly, which I would, you know, be happy to send to all of the board members, so that if there's any questions, I can obviously bring it forth in November. Along those lines regarding NJSPA, there's also a county meeting that I'm excited to attend on October 6th, I believe it is, and then the workshop that I know a few of us are attending at the end of the month, which, you know, I've always been a very big fan of professional development. I actually, you know, finished government's one, and I believe I have the hours accrued to receive that certification as needed, so, but I also think in addition to a liaison for the legislation, it might be nice to have a legis, a liaison for our, our town legislation, just because, you know, there are town council meetings, and obviously we can attend, and by name means, I think we should be taking part in them, we're not elected to serve there, but just to gather that information that's being given, so that if there's something pressing that we need to know, as a Board of Education, we have that information. And then also, I know another member had brought up the packet to give to people who moved to the, the district. I think that's a great idea as well, I know that there are people who come in and there's the ability to register for schools' information there, but some people, you know, have to look and search for these things, so to be given it, when you're moving to a new house, everything's overwhelming, so it's always nice to have that information right there. And then just the last thing, without going into anything of the negatives, is I just wanted to share that I had a friend who lives in Piscataway, who had compliment, not complimented me, but complimented our Monroe students on their exemplary behavior at athletic events, and I just wanted to share that, it's a common theme that, you know, I hear in the state, whether it's for music events, athletic events, but, you know, whether it's because of our administrators, or, you know, our coaches, or our, our students, I'm just really proud that, you know, our students really truly represent themselves and us very well, and so it obviously made me smile to hear that from somebody from another town.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bora?
Really quick, I have a comment for Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman. Of course, it was a wonderful start of the school year, very normal, so grateful for that. All of us have read in the news about the staff shortage across the country, and the driver shortage still exists across the country, but I wanted to take a moment to thank you for your hard work, Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman, for all the positions that were vacant, we did start pretty, very well started, and for the buses, we've not seen any challenges yet, knock on wood, all sports teams, no complaints compared to last year, it has been very smooth, right, a very smooth start of the year, and I want to congratulate the entire administration for the hard work behind it, thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, I'm excited for the opening ceremony of our beautiful new field. Thank you to Mrs. Arminio's work with, you know, collaborating with the town, and thank you to the town for, you know, making it happen at this pace, thank you, and hard work of Mr. Tag and his team in getting this done so efficiently and quickly without any issues, thank you.
Yes. Ms. Arminio?
About, about the, the track and everything, I just want the town to know that we, we have been always fiscally responsible, and we, it would have been over budget to put this very big medallion of the, of the school on the, on the field, and it would have been great, and everybody would have loved it, but it cost an extra $100,000. And this board decided that we would stay with the normal, standard medallion, and it does look beautiful, but we, we were really responsible, and since it would have been $100,000 that we would have had to come up with without the shared services, because it was over budget, we decided to be responsible, so I'm very proud of that as well, that we, you know, with all the enthusiasm of getting the new track and everything, we had, we had to be responsible. And since I spoke out of turn around with the policy, I'm just going to just mention that I do believe we should bring the cameras back and give our students an opportunity to work with them, and if we need more staffing, and we put staff, more staffing everywhere else, so I just hope that we see the cameras back for the school year and have our students participate in that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Our next item on the agenda is our public forum. If you would like to speak, you have four minutes to come to the podium, state your name and a town that you live in. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Hart, I reside at 110 Avenue K, East Monroe Township. I will read off all of my questions. Couple of questions, one, I submitted some information pertaining to a community event where a parent last year, not yet last year, I think two years ago, suffered an injury where she lost her hand, and in her efforts to navigate the system personally, she realized that there is a shortfall in gaps in ability to pay for your prosthetic hands and some of the services that are needed, so she created a foundation. I submitted that information to the superintendent, I got a response back from the Assistant Superintendent indicating that the information will be included in the Falcon flyer regarding the fundraising event, which is a walkathon. My request was to have an email blast, such as some of the other fundraisers that have been utilized, and that was what I want. Both would be great, if that can happen, thank you, and if it cannot happen, I want to know why. Okay? The next question pertains to the district, on the district strategic plan, it specifically states that goal for indicates, "The Monroe Township School District strives to create strong partnerships with our community through authentic communication and accessibility." The strategic plan was created in 2020, and it's a four-year plan. I have been advocating since that creation, because I was a part of the committees that were discussing what the needs were in the township when it was created. One of them was, for me personally, was some of these issues pertaining to African-American students in the school district, some of the racial things that were occurring, okay? You're almost at the end of the strategic plan. I was advised that the committee, a committee, would be created to dialogue and discuss these concerns. I had a meeting with Dr. Lehman, very cordial, I didn't bite his head off, I didn't yell at him, I didn't scream, it's like a fear, why is it, I've asked numerous years, almost every year, why haven't this committee been created? I would like to answer to that question, I think it's important, I think it's important to discuss the incidents that the students have experienced, especially during the time period when everything was virtual. A lot of things were said and done to African-American students with no consequences, and they were advised that because it was virtual, that they could not identify the perpetrator. Okay? So those are my questions, and then the last one, this, was it this week, last week, the Community Engagement Committee was meeting, I wasn't able to get in on it, that meeting, I don't know what happened, technology, I wasn't able to get in on that, that meeting. Want to know what happened, and if it's something that can easily be fixed, because when you clicked on it, it went to the buildings in, what, BG, BTG, yeah, Transportation Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So, there was a technical error with the link, they, we were not aware during the meeting as it was taking place, that people could not get in. The committee meetings are all videotaped, and they are all on our website, being, you are able to view it, you weren't able to view the live stream, but the video of that meeting should be available on the website.
Okay, is it currently available?
There was a technical error, it wasn't intended to be done, as some may put out there on social media, that we are trying to block people from seeing it, we absolutely were not, we were not aware I was here, we were not aware that that was not working, I think Ms. Bora may have emailed, texted us that there's something wrong with the link, we had our IT gentleman here, and he was very apologetic that the wrong link was out there, we do make mistakes, we apologize, on behalf of the Board of Education, I apologize to anybody who tried to watch that live, but we do have the video up there if you would like to view the meeting.
Thank you.
And the other questions, Mrs. Chanley, if you would like to answer those?
The email that you sent me, there are numerous different activities or events that get split between Dr. Lehman and myself, so regarding the email that you sent that was forwarded to Dr. Lehman, where he did say it would be put in the newsletter, I have no issue with sending out to, sending out to Blackboard Connect, I think all of the organizations that do such wonderful things should be given as much fanfare and as much, you know, hype out there, so that we can get more and more people involved, so that is not even a problem at all. And I will acquiesce to Dr. Lehman, because I do know that he met with you regarding the community, and I, I can't speak about what happened, you know, I wasn't even the Acting Superintendent at the time, that there was any type of events, so, or negative occurrences, but I, I know that we talked about a committee, so we will be happy to send that out for you, no problem.
Okay, do you have a timeframe? Because I would like to see that-
It could be out, it could be out by Friday.
Okay, thank you, because that will expedite things. Thank you.
So we, we had a conversation in the late spring-
Correct.
Approaching summertime, and, you know, certainly the diversity, equity, and inclusion focus is something that's very important for our community, and, you know, we, we support 100% developing a parent group, a community group to discuss racial issues. The, the original intent, when it was brought up in 2020, was to kind of collaborate with a company to facilitate that discussion, because I think when you're inside an organization, sometimes you are living that, and you need somebody with an outside perspective to kind of mediate, facilitate, and kind of provide different perspectives. So, as we mentioned in that conversation, one of the companies that we were looking to interact with, we actually are engaging with, for some other services, they also provide some, some other mental health services, but they have, they have a whole division that would work with us in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion work. So, we've developed a partnership with that committee, or that, that company, and the next step would be to kind of further that conversation and really bring them on board to explore as a community some of those issues, and I'm 100% on board with that, I know our administrative team is also very much supportive of that endeavor, and it's something we have to do thoughtfully and carefully and make it meaningful, and, and that's why, you know, we're not jumping in and rushing in and just bringing a group of people together without a, a purpose and a direction that would really benefit our children, so-
Okay, great, and I am available as a community member and a representative of the population, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum. Our next item on our agenda is our closed session resolution. This is on so I can see. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, matters protected by attorney-client privilege. Following closed session, action may be taken, the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
Go move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe we-
A secretary, do we need to appoint a secretary? I need to pay back with Mrs. Lehman, I would like to appoint Spelko or the Secretary for-
All those in favor?
Aye.
Apparently the group, got it, not a problem.
I believe it should be a pretty short closed session, so maybe about a half hour we'll be back. Okay, we're back in the public session. Our next scheduled board meeting is October 19th, 2022. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, our meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.